It's the season, Valentine's season.
Yeah, it's a Valentine's season.
Yes, sure.
So can we dive into, are you ready to talk love and money?
Oh yeah, sure, because that is part of life and therefore I'm more than ready to talk about it.
Okay, so let's just start with to manage a household budget or getting your wife or spouse or partner to follow it?
Yeah, thank you, Pumla. Now, having a budget is one thing, but getting your spouse to actually follow that budget is another. It is certainly not an easy one, but it takes the two, the couple to actually sit together and have that conversation regarding the budget with the view of convincing the other party to actually follow that budget and awareness is a bit of compromise, just to make sure that the budget is followed.
Yeah, that word compromise, I find that it managed to seep through every part
Yes.
of conversations regarding relationships.
Yes, it does, because just imagine, Pumla, having two adults together and you're discussing budgets and some people are not so much well versed with their budget, others, their budget personality is something that needs to be worked on. So they too have to find a way of compromising so that ultimately they can have a good.
The Bank of Uganda come to Moroto. The answer is actually very simple. We are here to listen, explain and work with you. To explain what the Bank of Uganda does so that as in Moroto, to Kato hard as in Rupa, understand how to listen to you, because no one understands the financial realities new. After all, you live, after all, you live and work here every day. And that's not all, to find solutions together, because to find solutions together, because financial stability, which will be explained, and economic progress, which the governor will touch on. Aisha was the issue of the use, was the issue of the use of national ID cards as collateral for loans. Let me make this clear, that this practice is illegal and please take this message back to the communities. If anyone takes communities, if anyone takes, we urge the communities to report to the authorities. Communities to report to the authorities. A second key concern governor I'd like to share with you was the issue of online lenders. Again, here we urge the, from only licensed lenders. Unregulated lenders operate outside the law, meaning that if something goes wrong, you may have no way to seek help. I think the rest will come through as the questions and answer session commences. So to, a tree cannot bear fruit without roots. Financial stability and growth start with strong foundations, ensuring that financial services reach every household, trader and business in Karamoja. You will hear about some of the wonderful programs that the Bank of Uganda has to help with this journey. So I would like to call upon you to engage with us today. Difficult to catch, but he has spared time to come here, so please make the most of today. Today is not just about speaking, it's about hearing from you, as your feedback will help shape how the bank continues to serve the people of Moroto. So ask questions, share your experiences and even here to listen to you, ala Kara.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenneth Egesa, who has ebulliently represented the secretary of Bank of Uganda. Let's add him another round of applause. Chairman, RC5, Moro district, Honorable David Karang. Karang, thank you. Honorable, you are most welcome. And he will be speaking at the end of this town hall meeting. So let me now take the pleasure of inviting the Member of Party A main, Honorable Lokhi, to come and deliver the remarks.
To be the Bank of Uganda Governor, so that, to be the Bank of Uganda Governor, so that we will step here with his team, Bank of Uganda team. Karibu, thank you for coming. You are such a wonderful team. First of all, to accept to come to Karamoja, which has been advertised negatively. Oh, don't go to Karamoja. Before you go to Karamoja, you write a will. Declare what you have and say, I have a debt with one so, I have money in the bank, I have some dollars, I have an account in Sweden. You declare before you come to Karamoja, but the narrative has changed. The narrative has changed, Karamoja now is peaceful. And Karamoja just never became peaceful without the efforts of specialized people who have been sent by God. These are our gallant security forces. We must thank our security forces, the UPDF, the police, the prisons and other auxiliary security agencies like Ashtu and many others, for putting in an effort to remove that illegal gun, which was a menace, which has caused untold suffering to this region, which has scared development, which has scared investors, which has stifled service delivery in this region. I am very proud that Karamoja now is peaceful, because RDC had already alluded to that fact. It was terrible. So Karamoja is peaceful and already there are some indicators which show that Karamoja is peaceful. In the communities there, you see, there are areas that have never been inhabited before, areas, to improve on agriculture. All these facilities are in our banks. The loans are there, the facilities are in our bank, but we are not utilizing. So I think this engagement is a wake up call for all of us, that we seem to be surrounded by opportunities, which we are not taking advantage of. We have so many banks here that give agricultural credit to the farmers, to the businessmen and women. But these loans are just, this money is just in the banks. And because of the mindset, our people fear loans, bank loans. You don't fear a bank loan. People always who fear bank loans are those who get money from the bank and squander it. They waste. So it is very imperative that when you get a loan from the bank, use it to in productive ventures. Use it to make more money. But if you get it, you go to level line, you start drinking, you start marring around, then the loan will bite you. So when we get loans, we must not squander the loans. So I have seen people resettling, in most parts of Karamoja by the way, that is settling in the fertile areas and I think this is where the bank can make, leave a positive impact. We have seen a number of tourists, the number of tourists coming to Karamoja is increasing. That is just one way to show that Karamoja now is peaceful, do here peacefully and you go back to your area peacefully. We have investors here now. Tomorrow, we have an engagement in Tebe with the Minister of Energy. They are disseminating the mineral map of Karamoja. You know, they could not carry out geophysical surveys to find out the minerals that exist in Karamoja, because there was a gun. But because the gun was no more, now the government was able to carry out the geophysical survey of Karamoja to establish the location of these minerals and the quantities of these minerals. And thank God, they were already finished and now tomorrow they are disseminating, they are calling various stakeholders, including members of parliament from Karamoja, to declare to them which minerals are in Karamoja. We are even hearing there is petroleum in Moroto and Kadamb, Brazil. Can you imagine? Karamoja, which used to be despised area, that there is nothing good in Karamoja, Uganda will not wait for Karamoja to develop, those stereotype kind of attairances, very obnoxious. Now we are here, Karamoja is going to be rich. What are you going to say? You go to Nanyedik, you will find all these products are under display and you can buy. Mount Moroto Hotel here, Museo de, of Cathedral, Mount Moroto Hotel here, Museo de, of Cathedral. Hopefully later, later this year, we shall start, Karamoja will start producing cement. We shall be cement here in Adunget. And so we believe that it will relieve the environment. Instead of people using firewood, I mean wood poles, cutting the forest for building. We believe that with the cement, with a lot of sun on the river beds in Karamoja, they will be able to make blocks, because then cement will be available and cheaply, they will be able to make blocks and make permanent houses. So I think this is the message the president has been talking about, socio-economic transformation. So it's now here and we should support the government to do that. Of course, business activities, we are seeing the number of people in Moroto and Karamoja increasing with different business activities. We have a number of circles existing in Karamoja, some are registered, some institutions. Can we help groups, associations in Karamoja to register? Because we believe if they are legally recognized, they will be able to access some of these credit facilities that are available in the various banks. Because if you are not legally recognized, then you will not get this loan. So register, so that that will open the door for you to get money to invest in your activities. So registration is very key. Of course, the main economic activities here is livestock rearing and of course crop cultivation, those are the main ones. Okay, the others, but these are the main livelihood options in the area. So even in terms of investment, this is where people always will want to borrow money and inject. So I sit in the Committee of Agriculture and Budget. Government is going to procure more than 250 tractors to be given to the farmers, mostly in Karamoja. More than 70% of those tractors, we want them here in Karamoja. So the tractors have already been shipped and they are being assembled there in Amalere. Hopefully they will be given in the course of this year. So more importantly, Bona Governor, we want to thank you for superintending the building of a resilient national economy with the government of Uganda. Economy which is resilient and resisting both internal, there is no Muzungu now who can say, I'm pulling my money and the economy of Uganda will collapse, no. They said, now if you people pass the anti-gay bill, you will not get money. We went and passed the bill. But our economy is moving. The Americans were threatening that you parliament, you are going to kill your economy if you pass this bill, no. Recently, our brother, our elder Trump came and said, USAID is no more for African countries. It has frozen for three months. He has closed all the USAID projects in Africa. So these external shocks will only affect countries that are not resilient. But Uganda is lucky, because we have a very brilliant and far sighted president, President Yorin Musebeni, who is a strategic leader. He knows where to put the energy, the physical energy. And it president in Africa who can reason, who can lead us like President Yorin Musebeni. It is the reason why I always plead, I will go kneeling to all the voters in Moroto, in Karamoja, so that we give the president another chance. Come 20, let us give him the chance, because I know there are some people who want to come and become presidents to destroy what we have already achieved. No, we don't want whatever we have achieved to go to the West. I think we shall have other engagements, which allow for other engagements and discussions later, but for now, I will end here with a simple task. To now invite our nephew, the governor of Bank of Uganda, Michael, who we are together in one Rotary Club of Muyenga. Actually, our Rotary Club of Muyenga has him, the governor, and also the deputy governor, Nuagaba. Two of them were in the same Rotary Club. That is another day, because Rotary Club is also helping disadvantaged communities. We will discuss that, how we can help disadvantaged communities in Karamoja. For now, it's a singular honor to invite you to come and address your.
Ala Kara, Honorable Lokhi. Allow me stand on the protocol that was earlier observed. And I want to begin by saying that it is a great honor to stand before you here today in the shadow of Mount Moroto. Mount Moroto is a towering symbol of resilience that Honorable Lokhi talked about. It's also a symbol of beauty and of Karamoja. Just as this mountain stands tall and unyielding against the elements, so do the people of Moroto. They stand resilient in the face of so many challenges that you've gone through. Mount Moroto is not just a geographical landmark. It is a testament of strength and potential of this region. If you look at the slopes of Mount Moroto, it's rich with diversity. It reminds us of the delicate balance between nature and progress and the need to protect our environment as we pursue economic growth. So I want to bring you first the warm greetings from the Bank of Uganda, your central bank. I'm very grateful for the warm welcome that you accorded to the team that came here earlier and for the general hospitality that was extended. And your presence here today is a testament of the profound insight of one great French philosopher and activist, someone called Simon Whale, who said, quote, "Attention is the rarest and the purest form," unquote. By dedicating your precious time to engage with the Bank of Uganda, you have demonstrated a form of giving that surpasses material gifts and is truly irreplaceable. So Mocha is not just a place of hope and a potential. For years, this region has been on the margins of national development conversations, but on the brink of a new era for this region. The winds of change are blowing across Moroto and the wider Karamoja regions and we are here to assure you that Bank of Uganda is not a spectator in this transformation. We are active participants, committed to walking this journey with you. Why is Bank of Uganda here in Moroto today? Of course, this is a question that many of you are asking. I know Honorable Lokhi was saying that you are waiting for a nephew to come, but I think it is more than that. I think we are here today to answer the simple question that, because Karamoja matters. Why does it matter? For two reasons. One, Karamoja has changed. And secondly, it is changing. Why has Karamoja changed? I want to echo the words of Toto Nalim, Honorable Jean Francis Amongi, the RDC of this place, and then also the words of, the words of Honorable Lokhi. What has changed in Karamoja? You don't have to tell me what has changed in Karamoja. Security has changed in Karamoja. Security has changed in Karamoja. I know what it means. I just bought a Karamoja. Security, we fell victim of that. Lost animals, displaced, there was a lot of suffering, because there was security in Karamoja. But because security in Karamoja has been restored, the security in the neighboring districts. So there is a spillover of what has happened in Karamoja to the neighboring districts and we don't take that for granted. We give God that glory. But even as we give God that glory, let's salute the gallant sons and daughters of the UPDF, who have made this possible together with the other security forces. The sacrifices they have made cannot be told, they cannot be valued. So we thank God for you, members of the security forces. God bless you. So what is changing? What is changing in Karamoja is what has already been alluded to. The emergence of the industries like mining, cement production and trade is reshaping the economic landscape of this region. The Honorable Lokhi talked about the marble factory in Rupa and the art factory in Naduteng. Nadunget, thank you for the correction. These are just, these are just not projects. They are signs of hope, promising jobs to the people of Karamoja, revenue and investment and all that comes with it. But for those industries to truly benefit the people of Karamoja, we must ensure that the financial systems are in place to support the miners, the traders and all the entrepreneurs in this part of the region. Then secondly, why is it changing? It's changing because financial inclusion matters. Economic transformation is only possible when every Ugandan, whether a trader in Morototown, a pastoralist in Rupa, or a small scale miner in Nakapiripirit, has access to safe and affordable financial services. The Bank of Uganda is here to ensure that financial services work for everyone, not just those in major cities. I'm glad our colleagues from the back, from the people we serve, because we want to improve on our performance. So we are here today to explain the Bank of Uganda role and how we carry out our mandate and to receive your feedback. We are not here merely to speak, but to listen and learn. This town hall meeting serves as a central, this town hall meeting serves as a central intersection point between your needs and our services. We are here to listen, to learn and to act. Let me quote a verse in the Bible. It is the book of Hosea, chapter four, verse six. It says, "My people are destroyed for lack of knowledge." You can be in the central bank, but if you do not know how your policies affect the bottom of the pyramid, maybe your policies are not successful. You need to see to what extent, you need to see to what extent your policies affect. Those at the bottom of the pyramid, policies affect those at the bottom of the pyramid. So we are here to hear from you, how are our policies affecting you, affecting you, people who matter in this country? And then of course also, we want to share with you, what are our services that we offer? So that you take advantage of those services. So we are all here to improve on our knowledge, on our understanding, so that it is a win-win situation for all of us, so that we don't get destroyed economically. We all need to prosper economically. So that knowledge sharing is very, very important. So let me share a vision with you, a vision of a transformed Uganda, where every farmer in Karamoja moves beyond subsistence to prosperity, where every small business owner has the capital to grow and where every family can secure their financial future. Isn't that a beautiful vision? So this vision is inspired by the Bank of Uganda mission to promote price stability and a sound financial system in support of socio-economic transformation of Uganda or in Uganda. So that's where that vision is coming. The vision of where every farmer in Karamoja moves beyond subsistence, where every business owner has the capital to grow and where every family can secure their financial future. So it is through that, that mission of Bank of Uganda, that's why we are here today. We contribute to the vision 2040 of Uganda, quote, "A transformed Ugandan society from a peasant to a modern and a prosperous country," unquote. And this is well articulated in our constitution of the Republic of Uganda, where the core mandate of BOU is the right from. So our core mandate is like a three-legged stool. Each leg essential for stability. The first one is price stability. When prices remain stable, a mother in the market can confidently plan her household budget. A farmer can predict the value of their harvest. A shopkeeper can stock their shelves without fear of sudden price changes. This stability is the foundation of economic growth. If prices are not stable, it's very unlikely that we can grow. If today the prices are rising very fast, you don't have any incentive to go and bank your money, because maybe the interest that you are going to get from the bank is not changing as fast as the prices. So it means that your money is losing value at a much faster pace and therefore you get discouraged from taking your money to the bank and it means that we can no longer intermediate, banks cannot mobilize savings for own lending and therefore it affects economic growth. And then also, one of our duties to oversight of the financial institutions. We want to ensure that your hard earned savings in the bank are very secure than if locked at home. When you trust your money to a bank, we ensure that that trust is honored. We oversee financial institutions in protecting your savings and your investments. And then sadly, we also want to ensure that there is a reliable payment system. Whether you are sending money through your mobile phone or conducting a bank transaction, we ensure these systems work smoothly, just as smooth as river, Kobebe and river Locoq during the wet season. You've seen how those rivers flow. They flow very well. So that's what we want to see our payment system flow. A reliable payment system are a lifeblood of commerce and trade. So that also promotes socio-economic transformation. Now beyond these core functions, the Bank of Uganda fulfills several traditional responsibilities that are vital to a nation's economic health. For example, managing foreign exchange reserves. These reserves are important because they strengthen the confidence of the investors. The investors who are investing now in the marble factory here, in the Attacar factory. That confidence that the foreign reserves are there, they know that anytime they want to repatriate their dividends that they have earned, they are able to either buy it from the market and if it's not there and the currency is kind of like fluctuating, Bank of Uganda can come in to smooth out that fluctuation. And that is based on the level of reserves. So we, we enhance investor confidence to come and invest in a place like Karamoja. Also currency management. So as a sole authority responsible for designing, printing and issuing Uganda banknotes and coins, we ensure a reliable and a secure currency system. Effective currency management is crucial for facilitating business transactions and maintaining monetary stability. We also a banker to the government. We handle all the payments on behalf of the government of Uganda for the ministries, departments and the agencies. In addition, we provide expert economic and financial advice to guide the policies on sound and financial principles. And then we also support socioeconomic development. And beyond that, the support of the socioeconomic development uh, means that um, uh, we engage to a large extent in, in that area. And to date, we are, we are administering programs like the agricultural credit facility that you've heard about, the Small Business Recovery Fund, uh, to support government initiatives or providing affordable financing to farmers, small businesses and entrepreneurs. We believe that these programs empower Ugandans to grow their enterprises and contribute to national prosperity. Now, we are mindful of the prevailing circumstances of the operating environment and emerging issues that affect central banking. The Bank of Uganda is actively involved in initiatives that directly contribute to developing the financial sector and supporting socioeconomic transformation. And this includes things like financial inclusion, where we are trying to expand these services right up to the bottom of the pyramid. And that's why I said there are some fintechs like, uh, Momo, alright, that are helping us reach the bottom of the pyramid. Our National Payments Act, our National Payments Act is promoting the use of some of these payment services to develop financial products that are meant to benefit the people who up to now remain unbanked. We also provide digital financial services. So we're promoting the use of secure and efficient electronic services, including mobile money to reduce the dependence on cash. This is especially important in remote areas like Karamoja where we cannot have every part with a commercial bank, brick and mortar. As long as you can have some banking services through mobile money, through these telephones or these mobile phones. What is important is are we providing a banking service? So that's why we are promoting digital financial services. We've also now engaged ourselves in domestic gold purchase. So instead of exporting raw gold, we are promoting domestic refining and value addition of this precious natural resource. This in our view is going to create jobs and ensure that Karamoja benefits from its mineral wealth. We therefore encourage the artisanal miners to organize into groups like circles, which can then bring their gold output directly to Bank of Uganda and we shall buy this gold at market prices. And that will ensure that you, you have some income. We also en- engage in environmental, social and governance initiatives. We are championing the sustainability within the Uganda banking sector. We are promoting guidelines to help financial institutions achieve their sustainability goals, support low carbon emissions and foster financial inclusivity. So every role that Bank of Uganda plays, it could be core, it could be traditional, it could be a new role and emerging role, is dedicated to ensuring economic and financial stability, fostering growth and securing Uganda's financial future. A future increasingly threatened by climate change and environmental risk. Leave alone the, you know, the emerging issues like you talked about, what's happening in the U S, the geopolitics. So we are here to try to secure that future. Now, let me go back to Mount Moroto. The breathtaking beauty of Mount Moroto and Saint Lawrence Falls is a testament to Uganda's natural heritage. This region's rich biodiversity provides a sanctuary for two hundred and thirty-five bird species and rare mammals, including the Ugandan koop, mountain ridback and the leopards. A reminder of our responsibility to preserve the environment in order to conserve our tourism in this region here. Climate change is not a distant threat. It is a present reality. We are seeing erratic rainfall, prolonged droughts and soil erosion in Karamoja. And these are a clear warning signs. The pastoralist communities whose livelihood depends on predictable weather and water access are among the most vulnerable. And I think these are the issues the people of Karamoja are concerned about. The need for urgent action has never been greater than now in order to manage the scarce water resources effectively. The Kobebe Water Dam, which was constructed to address water shortages and improve food production through irrigation, is now drying up. This has caused panic among the pastoralists who fear for the lives of their livestock. The dam, which was expected to, to hunt over scarce resources. So inasmuch as we have restored security in Karamoja, which has kind of like pacified the neighboring districts, the absence of pasture, the absence of water is causing the pastoralists to move around in search of the things here. And sometimes then they cross over to the neighboring districts. And you cannot say that there's a non-zero risk of creating conflict again. So it is very important that we address the water management issues in order to ensure that this peace prevails. So the Bank of Uganda recognizes that economic growth must go hand in hand with environmental sustainability. So through our environment, social and governance initiatives, we are working to ensure that financial institutions adopt sustainable practices. We are promoting green financing, which supports projects that have a positive environmental impact such as renewable energy, sustainable agriculture and water conservation. We are also encouraging financial institutions to support businesses that prioritize environmental protection and resource. In Karamoja, where pastoralism and agriculture are central to livelihood, like Honorable Loki had mentioned earlier on, we must ensure that our natural resources, water, land and forests are protected for the future generations. Excuse me. The Bank of Uganda promotes sustainable land use, reforestation and water conservation. We believe that by investing in green technologies and sustainable practices, we can build a resilient economy that thrives in harmony with nature. So I must commend the communities and the partners championing several promising initiatives to promote sustainability in Karamoja such as the Locoq Catchment, the Locoq Catchment Management Plan, which offers guidance for waters and socioeconomic transformation. The ecosystem's protection and restoration are key to enhancing land productivity and improving the quality of life for communities. Other efforts include reforestation, sustainable agricultural practices, exploring alternative income sources and community involvement and enforcing environmental regulations. Ladies and gentlemen, I cannot conclude without drawing attention of the Moroto and Karamoja communities to two crucial Bank of Uganda-led initiatives that are transforming the lives across Ugandans. Yet these initiatives remain unutilized mainly in this region. And the first of these initiatives is the Agricultural Credit Facility. This public-private partnership has channeled over one trillion shillings to over six thousand beneficiaries across Uganda. In northeastern region, where over five hundred projects have only received sixty-two billion out of the one trillion. So there's a lot that this region needs to do too, such as enhancing agricultural productivity and supporting farmers. They include the purchase of tractors for farming efficiency, working capital for grain purchases, financing great activities and improving agricultural operations through facilities like, uh, like greenhouses and storage units. Additionally, loans are used to acquire agro inputs, purchase cattle, livestock for farming and investment in agricultural machinery. These initiatives collectively focus on increasing food security and improving farmers' livelihoods across your neighboring districts. Earlier on, I mentioned that Karamoja is changing. What can the leadership of Karamoja do to sustain this change? Look, you don't have to have hundreds of cattle, heads of cattle. Even if you have fifty heads of cattle and the quality is good, I think this one counts. So sometimes you get plenty of rain during the wet season. How can we grow pasture? Convert that pasture into hay so that during dry season, your animals have something to feed on rather than walking miles and miles in for pasture? Why don't we take that initiative to convert the abandoned pasture that is there during rainy season into hay? So that you feed it on your animals. That will improve on the quality of your animals and you'll get a much better value for your animals. In so reducing maybe from a hundred to fifty, you can get some additional income and you can buy things like Government of Uganda treasury bills. And by so doing, you are diversifying your assets. You are not only holding your assets in cattle, but you also have some assets, financial assets in Government of Uganda treasury bills. So that is the vision of a changing Karamoja that we've come to share with you. How can we diversify this? And we have facilities for that. Agricultural Credit Facility can be accessed to help you transform some of the things. You know, grow more pasture, convert it into hay. And also, you can borrow some money for cattle fattening if you don't have any animals. You can get that money. So okay, fine, I'm taking this money. I'm going to buy some bulls. I'm going to fatten these bulls. And you can fatten a bull if you are assured of a source of pasture. If you are assured of water, you can repay that loan because you are going to get good quality animals. So we need to begin changing the conversation from quantity to quality while diversifying our assets from fiscal assets to financial assets. And by so doing also, you can explore things like water harvesting for irrigation so that you are able to, uh, to, to, you know, to be assured of some quantity of harvest. And as we produce more, then we can talk about value addition. We can talk about increased markets access because you need increased production to have greater market access. You need increased production for value addition. And this money is available in the central bank. So that out of the sixty-two billion that this region has received out of the one trillion, you increase on your share. I'll tell you a story of what other farmers in northern Uganda are doing. The other day, and I like quoting the example, I was looking at this form. They were asking for seventy million shillings. And there were hundred and forty people asking for seventy million shillings. Quick arithmetic. It meant that on average, each person was going to get five hundred thousand. So I asked myself, what on earth are they gonna do with five hundred thousand? It was very interesting that these guys were just going to buy improved seeds. They were going to buy horse and they were going to buy pesticides. That's all they wanted. And at the end of the day, they were able to get this money. They were able to repay that money and the outputs in that region increased. They were able to access the market. So it means they were able to get out of subsistence into commercial sector. They were able to commercialize their agriculture, which is really the main objective of Agricultural Credit Facility. How do we commercialize agriculture? And once you increase your output, not only are you going to commercialize agriculture, but you are creating an opportunity for value addition. So that if these farmers were growing things like sunflower, it means that you are now able to supply a market for an agro-processing factory for maybe making soya, I mean, for, you know, for making sunflower oil. Because you have increased on your production, you are going to attract more industries into the region. So the issue is, how can we take advantage of agricultural credit facilities? You may not only be wanting to do cattle fattening, but you can also, you know, dairy farming for milk. And once you increase your milk, if the consumption is lower than your output, you are going to attract agro-processing industries in the area of milk. You begin producing things like cheese, like yogurt, which have got better market outside Karamoja and you are assured of more and more income. So that's why I was, you were saying Karamoja is changing. But we need the support of the leadership of Karamoja. So Toto Nalim, what are you going to do about this? How are you going to convince the people of Karamoja to adopt these practices? Honorable Loki, what are you going to tell your constituents? We need to be part of this transformation. Also, we have what we call the Small Business Recovery Fund. This fund has been extended to a number of Ugandans, about three thousand four hundred enterprises, uh, to date who have exceeded nearly seventy billion. In Moroto, one hundred and eighty-six businesses have benefited from this, but only three point one billion. So I want to believe that either the information is not there. This Small Business Recovery is meant to help businesses recover and grow from the effects of COVID nineteen. They are meant to help, uh, uh, you know, resuscitate these businesses. So how can you take advantage of this? So these two initiatives, the S E F and S B R, promote inclusive finance through block allocation arrangement that I've talked about. And this approach enables smallholder farmers. You said earlier on that these farmers don't have land titles. Land is communally owned. At this block allocation that I've referred to, you don't need to have a land title. This approach enables smallholder farmers and micro borrowers to access credit without traditional registered collateral. Instead, it relies on borrower's character, cash flow quality, movable properties. You gave the example of circles, how these fellows are so committed to paying whatever loans they get from the circles. This approach of block allocation thrives on the same principle. So you don't need a collateral in order to, 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 um, access this credit from Bank of Uganda. So as I, as I conclude, I just want to, to, to emphasize that we need to take advantage of these two initiatives by Bank of Uganda. Now, Moroto and Karamoja, to take advantage of this funding available, we ask you to engage with the banks to explore the opportunities which can help enhance. Yes, I've heard the cry that sometimes you go to a bank. The bank keeps quiet about its initiatives. They want to market their products which are more expensively priced. We've had that cry and I promise you we're going to have a conversation with the banks about this. So in our view, the transformation of Karamoja is a shared responsibility. One that requires all of us to, to participate actively and, uh, engaging all the players, whether big or small. And it does require collaboration. And it does require collaboration among all stakeholders. This is the spirit behind our presence here today and also our theme, going further together. As the African proverb wisely says, if you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together. In that spirit, I now invite your feedback on our progress, your questions, which is going to shape our improvements. Your suggestions will guide and push forward what we, we want to do, um, in the near future. Share your responses, your experiences, voice your concerns and ask your questions, big or small. There's no big question, there's no small question. Anything that troubles, ask it. Don't feel shy because it is through open dialogue that we build a stronger and a more prosperous Uganda. We brought a team here of senior Bank of Uganda staff and the other regulators because we, so that we walk this journey together. So as we look to the future, let us draw the inspiration from Mount Moroto. I love that mountain, Mount Moroto, a symbol of resilience, sustainability and unity. These are the keys to lasting prosperity. Together, we can build a future where Karamoja thrives, not just economically, but also environmentally and socially. Let me conclude by thanking you for your very kind attention, your engagement, your willingness to listen and your commitment, excuse me, to taking progressive actions, each at your level, within your means and mandate are all invaluable contributions in this region's transformation journey. I want to thank you all for your very kind attention. Let us go farther together. God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. What a way to appreciate Governor Makea Ting Ego. We may get seated and be able to proceed with the rest of the program. Governor, sir, we are grateful for the insightful and rich speech. On the program, we are going to have a few presentations and after that, we'll go to the question and answer session, which is a very important session because we'll be receiving feedback from you concerning the mandate of the Bank of Uganda. But before that, I want to recognize more people who have joined us. With us in this tunnel meeting is Honorable Napaja Andrew Kim, a key opinion leader and former district chairman, Moroto. Honorable Longoria Alex, the Chairperson Chamber of Commerce. Honorable Otte Maiko, Chairperson NRIM, already introduced by the RRD C. Ms. Nangiru Patricia, who is representing UNFPA. We have the Executive Director, Aban Woman Initiative, Ms. Kristin Akot. Mister Okori Linus, Regional Election Officer, Karamoja. And because of time, I'll again, just recognize one more person who is a key opinion leader in Moroto, Dr. Peril Somer. Now we'll proceed and go to yet another important part of this program, which is, uh, presentations. We are going to have only three presentations. The very first presentation is going to come from, uh, the Director of Agricultural Credit Facility and Other Business, Other Credit Schemes, Department of the Bank of Uganda and the governor so much spoke about, uh, the ACF, but she'll be coming to tell us how people can actually access this money. And she'll be coming to tell us how people can actually benefit from that and also apply for the Small Business Recovery Fund. Then we'll have another presentation on how you can invest in government securities, that is treasury bills and bonds. The governor has very much implored us to diversify our asset or investment portfolio and think beyond just keeping cows, but also invest in financial assets. And Ivan Setimba will later come to, um, make a presentation on that. And the other presentation, which is very key, is going to come from our financial, sister regulator, the Capital Markets Authority. And because normally it's good to give the visitors a chance first to speak, so she'll be speaking first. So I request you to join me in welcoming Director CPA Josephine Okui Osia, who is the Chief Executive Officer of Capital Markets Authority, but also a board member, Bank of Uganda Board of Directors.
Thank you. Good morning. Atake Rioga. Ejokonoi. My name is Josephine Okui Osia. Maiko is, governor is a nephew. For me, I'm a niece. I am from Palam. Yes, so I'm your neighbor just here and I'm very glad to be here and thank you very much for coming, uh, for coming for this, uh, event. And before I go into my speech, I have a very special attachment to Karamoja. My father, the late Charles Okui, was educated by an elder in Karamoja, the late Yakobo Lawoke. He was a sub-county chief for the, the then Bokora County in Kangoli. So and because my father was educated, he also educated us. So that is the attachment that I come, uh, have in Karamoja and I'm very, very happy to be here. So on behalf of the Capital Markets Authority, first of all, I would like to extend my sincere gratitude to the Central Bank of Uganda for giving us this opportunity to be here and to partner with them in this journey. So at Capital Markets Authority, we, for us, we are committed to ensuring that we foster a vibrant and inclusive capital markets. You're probably asking yourself, what is capital markets? So capital markets is a place where you buy and sell, uh, financial products, just like how you go to the market and you buy tomatoes, onions, cassava. The capital markets is where you go and buy the financial products, which I will tell you about what are some of the, the products that are there. But let me just start by telling you about the existence of capital markets. It was formed by an act of parliament in nineteen ninety-six and its purpose was really to facilitate and encourage people to, to invest in the capital markets, but also to promote and regulate that market to make sure that whoever is playing in that market is participating in that market, is doing it in a, in the correct way, is fair, efficient, is also trustworthy because you're dealing with people's money. So our role is really to protect you who want to participate in the capital markets and ensure that you don't lose money when you participate there. So as capital markets, we license people who participate in the market. So we have licensed nine fund managers. So what are fund managers? Fund managers are those people who manage your money on your behalf. Then we've also licensed seven collective investment schemes. Collective investment schemes almost work like the circles, the village saving groups that you know, where you put your money together and then you invest it. So usually you put the money together, you give it to a fund manager who invests it for you and then you earn interest. And we have seven of those schemes. We also have five brokers. I don't know how many of you have heard about companies that are listed on the stock exchange? Companies like Umeme, companies like Stan Big Bank, companies like Baroda. If just by show of hands, how many people have heard about companies listed on the stock exchange or even have an idea or have invested in, in any of these companies? Yes, so there are, there are a few. So our role also is to ensure that when these companies come and look for your money, they must tell you all the information about those companies so that by the time you invest your money, you know what you're getting in and also to ensure that they're delivering return to you. So governor has talked about, uh, financial inclusion and financial literacy. So and there are a number of programs now that government has put in place to try and improve the livelihood of the people of Uganda, including the people of Karamoja. And one of them is PDM, the Parish Development Model, who all of you are aware about. And the key objective is really to ensure that people get money, make money and therefore improve their livelihoods. But even as you make this money, what are you going to do with it? So for us as capital markets, we are here to tell you the options of how you've gotten the money, you've done your project, it has prospered, but it's also to teach you how you can save that money. Governor has talked about putting the money in banks. The banks will give you interest, but there is another alternative of where you can actually invest this money in the capital markets and earn even a better return. So even as you trade and as you do your business, there are options in which you'll be able to put your money and, and there are things and these vehicles that are available can help you save for things like school fees, save for medical, save for retirement. When you're no longer able to, to work, you should have savings that can continue to look after you. And savings is not about old or young people only, it's for everybody. It's just keeping something away for a rainy day when you need it. And we have been, my team has been here for the last two days and it has actually come to our attention that the people of Karamoja have lost money to scamps. How many of you heard about the bridge water stocks or you put money in bridge water stocks? So those people are not, so before you even start to deal with such people, you should first ask them, are you licensed by capital markets? Because they are not allowed to come to the public to start collecting money if they are not licensed. Because if they are licensed by capital markets, we'll ensure that they are looking after your money well and that you'll get your money back. So they'll come and convince you in a number of ways to try and entice you. So what are some of the things that you should watch out for, for people who come with those scamps? One, they will, they will promise you risk-free opportunities and with consistent returns. I hear they were giving ten percent per week. You see, if Bank of Uganda, the money bank can only give you maybe seventeen percent per year, who is this one who's coming and giving you ten percent per week? That should be a red flag. That's the first thing. Secondly, they will pressure you. They'll make it so urgent. You see, you must put the money, the money is about to get finished. You're the last one. If you don't invest today, you won't, you'll lose the opportunity. That's another red flag. Yeah, they put pressure on you to invest so that they can get their sales quickly. Also, they won't tell you exactly what they're investing in. There is no documentation, there is no, they won't be clear on how they are going to earn that return. That's another red flag that you, you need to, to look out for. And usually they will come probably waving a license from URSB saying, oh, we are registered company and everything. But as long as they are collecting money from the public, you should always ask them, where is your license from Capital Markets Authority? And once you ask them that, you'll see that, uh, they will probably disappear. So my appeal is really for the leaders here, the DSOs, the RRD C, Totona Lim. If you pick up any such schemes, please let us know and we'll, we'll leave our number behind where you can contact us of any such persons who are coming into the area to, to try and collect money. So where can you save the money, uh, when you come to the capital markets? The first thing is what is called as debt securities. And this is treasury bills, treasury bonds, and someone from BOU is going to come and talk about that. And this is really, uh, money that is being, these are issued by the central bank and they are used to raise money to support government projects. So even you as individuals here, you can contribute in building this economy by lending your small money to government to do the projects that they want to, to come. And because that is what patriotism is about, we should all participate in the development of our country. And they come in different forms, but I won't go into that detail. But I must say that government is putting in place a project which will enable even the lowest person, the people in the villages, as long as you have a mobile phone, to be able to invest in these treasury bills and bonds. And that project is soon going to be launched. And at the reach, and as governor says, it's about socio-economic transformation, reaching the last mile and encouraging everybody to participate in the development of our country. We also have, uh, what we call the collective investment schemes. And this is really where you pull your money together because as an individual, you may not be able to invest, but you come together as a group and put your money. And this money is usually given to what a person called a fund manager. And these fund managers are licensed and supervised by capital markets. They are professionals in the areas of investment and they'll help you to invest that money and grow it and make you get a, a good return. So they're similarly to how you, and some of your circles, your village savings groups, instead of keeping this money in a suitcase under the bed, the suitcase gets lost, someone runs away with the money. Once you've collected your money, you should be able to put it in the collective investment scheme, give it to a professional fund manager who's licensed. And my team is here to be able to guide you and then you'll be able to save your money and actually, uh, and a return. And you need only as little as ten thousand shillings to be able to participate. And I believe all of us in this room can at least raise ten thousand shillings and be able to join a collective investment scheme. So currently the assets in this program are about three point eight trillion. And again, this is an avenue where you can support government. Of this three point eight trillion that has been raised through collective investment schemes, two point six trillion is invested in government securities and government bonds. So again, that, 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 the, that provides you an opportunity. So currently we have seven licensed, uh, fund managers, Britam Asset Managers, Cornerstone Asset Managers, ICEA Lion, Old Mutual Investment Group, SBG Securities, Zeno and Sanlam. And my team is here to be able to give you all those details. Now let me speak to the small and medium enterprises. And I believe that most of the businesses in Karamoja fall in that, in that category. Uh, that you can also be able to raise money through the capital markets for the small businesses. And the first avenue is we have what we call private equity. And we do license private equity farms that support small businesses to grow. But however, for your business to be supported, it has to be formal. And we talked about the need to register businesses. Unfortunately, the URSB is not here, but it, to be able to access money, your business must be formalized. So the first step would be for you to register and ensure that you're formal and then you will be open to all these activity, uh, that capital that is available for, from the private equity farms. I know that some businesses have accessed, uh, money from informal private equity farms and some of them have ended up losing their businesses. So again, it's important for you to work with people who are licensed that will also take care of your needs as the small investor. So so far, we have supported businesses in dairy, coffee, vanilla, project, and all these are things that tourism, these are all things that can be done in this region. And as governor says, Karamoja is changing, the opportunities are immense and therefore it's the time for Karamoja to think about some of the projects that they can do and come and get capital. So we are working with the financial sector deepening, um, Uganda. It is funded by the EU, luckily not by the US, so they still have money. And so they help to connect businesses to people who, to investors who want to, to support. So, and so far we have been able to support forty-four, uh, businesses and with a potential of raising up to sixty million dollars. So the opportunities are there. Once your business is formalized, you can reach out to us and we'll be able to see how can we connect you to, to the people who have, uh, capital. And to this end, we have been able to impact fourteen thousand households. We have been, those businesses have been able to pay taxes of about, over three hundred and seventy-eight billion. And therefore, uh, as capital markets, we also like to continue to support the socio-economic transformation and development. the socio-economic transformation and development of our economy. And for the women, we do have funds that are specific for women. So if you have women projects that you want to be supported, you can reach out to us and we'll connect you to that. In terms of innovation, we, we are coming up with a number of guidelines, what we call the Regulatory Sandbook Guidelines, for your youth who have ideas that they think they can, want to develop, they want to participate in the market and they have an idea. They can reach out to us and see how can we help them test those ideas that they have. And therefore, provide the kind of products that actually speak to the needs of the people. We are also introducing products for the, our Muslim brothers, those that are Sharia compliant. Currently, there are some Muslims who do not want to participate in interest-bearing products. But we are also going to introduce the Sharia compliant products where even our brothers, the Muslims, can be able to participate and make money. So we are trying to be all-inclusive, to cover everybody and ensure that everybody can participate and make some money and improve their livelihood. So really, in conclusion, for us as capital markets, ours is to uphold the highest standard of, of operations in the market in terms of integrity and also in terms of sustainability, protecting our investors and promoting a market confidence. So once you participate in the market, you should be confident that you're protected, your money is protected. Even if they do run away with your money, we'll be able to get it back. And there are systems in place that actually can prevent them from go taking, taking your money and running away. So for example, the collective investment schemes, the fund manager does not touch the money. The money sits with a bank, which is regulated by Bank of Uganda. And then we also have people who are called trustees who look after this money. So please do not fear that the money will run away. And that's why we are here, working together to ensure that everybody is covered. My team is here, if you're interested in collective investment schemes or any form of investment, albeit shares, please speak to my team and speak to me and we'll be able to guide you. And now with the tenfold growth program of the, and the ATMs, which is agriculture, agriculture and agricultural processing, tourism, mining, and science and innovation, I think Karamoja is in a very good place to benefit from this and be the drivers of the growth of our economy. So thank you very much for listening to me. We'll be here to answer any questions ala Karanoi.
Thank you very much, Director CPA Mrs. Josephine Okui Oseya, the CEO of Capital Markets Authority, but also a board member, Bank of Uganda Board of Directors. So we are going to have two more presentations before we can go into a feedback session during which you'll be able to give us feedback. But before that, I just wanted to announce that one. In case there are emerging questions that you note as we move along with this tunnel meeting, kindly write them on the pieces of paper. The team from the Bank of Uganda will move around and collect those questions so that the governor and the team can happily answer them. But that does not mean that you won't have an opportunity to ask your questions verbally. But as we might know, time always is never on our side. So may not be able to have each and every one in the hall to ask. But put them in writing and then a few of us will be given an opportunity to ask verbally. Two, we have enough water. We know it's a bit getting hot here. Please make use of that water. In case you need more, you can let us know. And we add you more water. Three, break tea is ready, but because of the time constraint, we want to convert it to working tea. So the people at height have ball be approached by the hotel and then they'll get their orders and then have them served. Then the rest of us will be taken out in a number of five so that we don't interrupt the flow of this tunnel meeting. And we partake in break tea. And then very lastly, just remind you that we are here mainly to get feedback from you. So in that information package, you have the evaluation form. Kindly complete it at your convenience, but not later than end of this tunnel meeting. The Bank of Uganda team will again move around and collect those forms at the end of this tunnel meeting. So evaluate us at your convenience and give us honest feedback so that we can serve you even much better going forward. The governor talked about, employer does to think beyond just the quantity of cattle, but also the quality of cattle and do things like cattle fattening. And to do that, you need money. And he mentioned that we have agricultural credit facility at the Bank of Uganda. I want now to take this opportunity to invite Mrs. Hajar Akaslema Wanda, who is the Director of Agricultural Credit Facility and Other Credit Schemes Department at the Bank of Uganda, to come and tell us how we can access this money and more so the terms and conditions. And I think five minutes could be enough, Hajar. Thank you.
Thank you very much, MC. All protocol observed. A very good morning to each and every one of you, ladies and gentlemen. Ebalai, ejoka. Yes, it is fascinating to be able to learn a new language or pick up a few words in this beautiful country of ours. And I am constantly amazed at the richness of our country. No wonder it is called the Pearl of Africa. It is an honor to be here today to give some salient points about the agricultural credit facility as well as the Small Business Recovery Fund. Governor, sir, it was really impressive to see how much of the detail I was going to present that you actually did for me. So you made my work very easy. I'll just go ahead and, and, and tell you what it really takes to be able to get access to the agricultural credit facility as well as the Small Business Recovery Fund. The government of Uganda is cognizant of the fact that in the remotest parts of the country, in the communities where you have simple people, farmers, we need to be able to empower them to change our economy at large. And by so doing, the agricultural credit facility was set up in 2009. Interestingly, it's 15 years since this happened. And a lot of people have been beneficiaries of this, of these products by the government of Uganda. We at Bank of Uganda are not going to have you coming directly to us to borrow the loans. No, please take that in, really note that. You don't have to walk to the nearest branch of Bank of Uganda to apply for these loans. The commercial banks, the micro deposit-taking institutions, the credit institutions in your locality are going to receive your requests for these loans. But what we have noted that is really holding back these facilities is the fact that many people don't even have a simple bank account. So the first step is to make sure you have a bank account. And of course, the proposal has to come in form of a viable project, an agricultural project, anything across SCF, anything across the agricultural value chain. It could be grain trade, it could be cattle fattening, like the governor alluded to, sale of produce and anything that is attributed to commercializing agriculture or increasing the value of produce along the agricultural chain can be a project. But I have realized that it is simpler for people who do not have the traditional financial institutions or groups like circles are actually receive loan requests. So it's a future proposal we are coming up with. But the fact that they already organize in two circles means that they can already exist almost, I mean, get almost immediately the facilities that are available right now. All they need to do is look at the different options. And one of the options that is available to almost anyone is the block allocation model. The block allocation model allows for borrowing up to 20 million. And it considers the fact that many people don't have traditional collateral like land titles. So there are alternative collateral that is, is admissible in this kind of allocation. And among these, you can have people, once they have bank accounts, they have a good borrowing history, or they can get together and get a guarantee for their loan. Very good example that governor gave of the group that get got together as 70 million and collectively asked for a loan. There are many ways. But I feel what is missing is more sensitization on how this can, this can happen. So you can borrow up to 21 billion shillings. And this is even extendable so long as the project is really going to contribute a lot of value to the economy. Grain trade, you can borrow up to 10 billion. So this, there is a lot of money to get. But some of the considerations are the fact that the, the, the small and medium and long-term projects cannot go beyond eight years. The minimum period is six months. And there is a grace period of three years where you can, for the SCF loan, apart from the grain loan. The grain loan, there is no grace period. During this grace period, you're paying back only interest. And a grace period for agricultural projects is three years. For the grain trade, you can borrow up to 10 billion. And there is no grace period, but you can pay within two years. So what are the activities that are prohibited from? The projects that are prohibited for borrowing against include working capital for other agricultural activities apart from the grain trade, planting trees, buying land or financing an existing loan. So the Small Business Recovery Fund, am I still within my five minutes? I'm winding up. Yes, this one actually, because someone yesterday spoke about representing artisanal miners. This is one area, including other businesses that have, well, the one thing that we have realized is the record-keeping. Financial literacy is missing. So record-keeping, someone wants to borrow a loan, but they have no financial records. They don't know where to start from. I think like we were told, financial literacy is very, very much required in order to access these loans. And you have to have a history of good record-keeping. So the Small Business Recovery Fund was begun during the COVID nine, COVID times in 2021. Its inception was in November of that year. And ever since then, so many people have been beneficiaries of, of, of this loan, of this credit. You can actually borrow to a tune of almost 100 million. I mean, accessible loan amount is 200 million, but turnover of your business, you should be making sales from your business of at least 10 million and a maximum of 300 million in a year, within a year. So if you have a business that is below that, it might not be considered. But still, you can use the block allocation model to be able to also gain access to this facility. The interest rates, this is where I think these two facilities are very, very salient in, in, in addressing the loan, the loan viability. Because for the Small Business Recovery Fund, it should not be a maximum of 10%. For the agricultural credit facility loan, it's not a maximum of 12%. So if you compare this with the traditional loan interest rates that you're given, it is way, way below. So it is really worth it, making sure that you have the requirements to get these loans. For the grain trade, the interest is maximum 15%. We have done quite a bit of sensitization, but I do realize that there's still so much more to do. But it's not just sensitization on what's available, but sensitization on also financial literacy so that everyone is aware of the kind of requirements they need in order to be, be able to get these loans. I want to thank you very much for your attention ala Karanoi. Yes, we are all brothers and sisters. If you move out of Uganda, they won't ask which part of the country you're coming from. So I believe it is, it is very good. Oh, yes, we will have people outside in the tent to represent, to explain a little more detail if you have questions on what has been spoken about. We also have flyers that you can carry back with you and look at them afterwards. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Hajar, for taking us through SCF and Small Business Recovery Fund. The next presentation is on how you can invest in treasury bills and bonds. The governor told us to think beyond just cows and diversify our investment portfolios, diversify our assets and consider going for financial assets. So to make a presentation on how you can do this is Mr. Ivan Setimba, who is representing the Director of Financial Markets Department at Bank of Uganda. He's coming to tell you on how you can invest in treasury bills and bonds. Five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Robert. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I will very briefly take you through the process of investing in treasury bills and bonds. Now, when we talk about treasury bills and bonds, we have two types of securities that we offer. We have the treasury bills, which run for a maximum of 3364 days or one year. And in that, we have 91 days, 182 days and 364 days. So you can invest in treasury bills for three months, six months and one year. But we also have bonds which run for a longer period. You can invest for two years, three years, five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years. So longer period, the other one is shorter period. Now, what do you need to do to invest in treasury bills and bonds? The first thing you have to do is you need to have what we call a CSD account, which is an account very similar to a bank account that will hold your investment in treasury bills and bonds. And for you to be able to open this account, you'd have CSD account, Central Securities Depository Account. So you would have to approach one of the banks. I see Stanby Kisia, they're very, very active in this market. We have Centenary Bank, they're also active in this market. So you approach one of the banks, you request for the CSD forms, you fill out those forms. There are certain requirements like your national ID and other basic requirements. But you also have to provide a bank account for now. Because these two will have to be linked. When you are investing, the investment funds will have to come off your bank account. And when you're receiving interest, this interest will be paid into your bank account. So you will have to have a bank account and a CSD account. And for you to be able to invest in these treasury bills, you need a minimum of 100,000 Ugandan shillings. So the minimum is 100,000 Uganda shillings. So there probably could have been a perception that you need millions of shillings to invest in treasury bills. That is not correct. You only need a minimum of 100,000 shillings to be able to invest in treasury bills. And as the director. And as the Director alluded to, there is a project that is in the works. And probably you will be able to invest even lower amounts through the Mobile Money Platform. But for now, it's at 100,000 shillings. And you are able to start investing in these treasury bills and bonds. And anyone can invest in these treasury bills and bonds. You can invest as an individual, you can invest as a Sako, you can invest as a VSLA, you can invest as a group, as an association. If you, we had someone from the artisan miners. If you have an association and you have some funds, you could invest those funds in treasury bills and bonds. And the return on these investments is quite good compared to other investments that you could make. Your typical saving account earns probably 3% per annum. Treasury bills, 14%. You have bonds that go up to 17%. So there are not many investments that can earn you. You will receive your interest when it's due. So we really encourage you as leaders to also think about it, but also speak to your constituents about the opportunity that treasury bills and bonds provide to them. The Governor spoke about diversification. I think that's a very, very important thing. You can have cattle, you can have other assets, but you can also have financial assets which give you a regular cash flow. And I think we all know the need for a regular flow of cash. And just also to mention that we've been speaking about collateral, the lack of, you know, acceptable collateral in terms of land. Treasury bills and bonds can actually be used as collateral to get loans from commercial banks. So you invest, you are earning a return, but you're also able to pledge these bills and bonds as collateral to be able to get loans from the banks. So I really, really urge you to think about and consider investing in treasury bills and bonds. Robert is looking at me, so I will not take up too much time. But we have a lot of information for you that may be interested. I have my colleague Sarah, who you can approach, and she will provide you with more information. But we also have leaflets. Sarah, if you could stand up. So, and she's very appropriately dressed. Can't miss her. So if you have any more, if you require any more information, please reach out to Sarah. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ivan Setimba, for clearly telling us how we can access the, invest in treasury bills and bonds. Now, we are now transitioning into that important segment of this program when we get here from you. I want to get feedback from you. And we are going to do it in two forms. I have seen the very first hand there, and I'm coming to you, sir. We're going to take a round of five. In case you have the written questions, please forward the papers to us. Bank of Uganda team will collect them, and we have the questions answered. The Governor reserves the right to decide who can answer which questions during session. And in case of place of convenience, you can use the left exit, go at the end of the building, or use the rear exit, go on the right-hand side to access the place of convenience. Your name and just one question, sir.
Thank you very much, Governor and your team. I am called Ayaro Richard. I'm the Town Clerk, Moroto Municipal Council. I have loved the presentation of the last presenter on bonds and securities. As government, one of our mandates is to provide services. We don't conduct business. I was requesting, if it is possible, that a law be amended to allow governments, especially local governments, to participate in the business of treasury bills and bonds. Yeah, because currently, we need to be sustainable. Relying on trading license and this kind of thing is no longer sustainable. So we were requesting that we be allowed to participate in the sale and buying of treasury bills and bonds. Because it's not one of our mandate. And then lastly, you allow me just one more request. This is a request for us, the civil servants. Civil servants do not know how to do business, and this is the area where we are supposed to do business. Mr. Governor, is it possible for you to send us back your team specifically for treasury bills issues? To that, we are taking through the mathematics. Because the presenter did not talk about the taxes, because I am sure when you invest, there must be a tax. We want to hear how much do they charge? How much, because I have seen the mathematics here. When you invest 11 million times 88.8 point something, you get this. But what is the tax, I submit?
Thank you so much, Town Clerk. We'll start with, okay, I'll come back to you. Your name and just one question.
My name is Colonel Alan Changungu, Deputy Division Commander, Division Number Three. Governor, sir, thank you very much and the entire team. Thank you for, number one, for supporting disarmament efforts. The three days you have been here, what you have done is incredible. It is mental disarmament. I have gone through the flyers here. I have seen a number of financial institutions you regulate and work with. I have not been able to see Wasalendo. Wasalendo Sako is one of the biggest in the country. The biggest portion of the members of UPDF receive our salaries today through Wasalendo. So when I could not find Wasalendo in any of these leaflets, I became a little bit uncomfortable, wondering if we are operating an illegal entity. What do you have to say about that, sir? Thank you.
Thank you. Your name?
Thank you very much, Toyakadada. I'm Lotuke Mark Strikers from the Uganda Retirement Benefits Regulatory Authority. My appeal is just, we are available as the sector regulator for retirement benefits in case there are any questions at this point in time. Because of the time constraint, we could not speak in front of you, but we are available. I have a team here with me, so please raise any questions related to your retirement.
Thank you so much, Ubra. We have, okay.
Thank you very much. My name is Caesar Col. I'm the speaker here. But because when food is served, we forget the cooks. And I am part of the cooks that made sure that this meeting happens in Moroto. I just want to ask a simple question. What does it take for Bank of Uganda to establish its regional branch in Karamoja? Because the rest of the regions at least have Bank of Uganda points. And this one of Karamoja specifically would even serve some parts of Teso and Sebei. Because the information we are sharing here is really very vital and critical that we cannot just get anywhere. So it would really be nice for you people to come around. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Right, Honorable Speaker. I'm reserving a slot for the lady. A lady who is ready to ask? A lady? Okay, we need to close the first round.
Thank you very much. My name is Kristin Akot. I had many issues, but I think I went to zero to two. Just help me, because the other one touches women. Yes. Okay, one is, when a governor, I am crying on behalf of the civil servants and especially the teachers. These financial institutions have really tortured the teachers, even the police. Because these people get loans from these financial institutions, and then the banks or these institutions take their IDs, take their ATMs, and then at the end of the month, they deduct. And then again, when even this person has finished, the money is still being deducted. And so these people go into loans. Sometimes that's why they get depression. And especially the teachers, they even dodge to teach our children. And sometimes they even run away from this Moroto. And that's what, that's an example for, especially the teachers who don't come from Moroto or Karamoja. They get these loans, and then they just run away because they fear the torture of this financial institution. Then the other one is about, I wanted to ask specifically, what products do you have for the rural woman? We are rural women. We are indigenous women in Karamoja. But what specific product do you have for us? Even the grow project, which was brought for women, it has disappointed us. You go to the bank, you don't get the money. They tell you the money is over. Then you ask the banks, who took that money, if it's for women? Who took it? So that is why today I'm really great. I know this is not the, I think we attended a Bank of Uganda Hall meeting 10 years ago in Moroto Chamba Hall. And I'm glad that you've come this time. The other one, the governor was not there, but this one, it has a governor. Thank you very much.
You've heard from the lady. Sir Governor, sir, we could first respond to those, and then we take another round of questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. For the question that you've raised, I'm going to delegate. But Richard, the Town Clerk, could you just, could you just remind me? Okay, all right. Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Richard, Town Clerk, was wanting to find out that we were not being very transparent, that there is also a tax on treasury bills and treasury bonds. So I'm going to ask Ivan to respond to that. Then Colonel Alan, thank you very much for the perspective you have brought of mental disarmament. That is really a very good narrative. Thank you that we have joined you in the war of disarmament. Thank you. Now, a good question about Wasalendo. I'm going to ask Makai Aomu. Is he around? Yeah, he's the Director of the Non-Bank Financial Institution. He's going to tell you where Wasalendo is in terms of the regulation. He will, he will explain that. And then Maxwell, you asked a question about the retirement benefits. I'm glad that we have a representative from Ubra. What was his name? Are you still around? Yes, what's your name again, sir?
I'm Maklo Tuke.
Tuke?
Yes.
So, Mr. Tuke, can you respond to a question about these retirement benefits? And then Caesar. Caesar, I can see you in a campaign that we'd have a regional branch here where they pull up Soroti, Kumie, you name it, should be coming to Moroto to get the services. So I will first ask Vincent Muggiza to respond why, whether it's possible to have a branch here, but I'll come later on to wrap it up. Then Kristin, you are really, really very passionate in terms of your questions. The good thing is that we have a representation of Stanby Bank, not only branch manager, but also a regional manager. They are going to explain, first of all, to confirm whether what you're saying is true. And if it's true, they have to explain why they're doing that. And then I'm sure there's someone from Postbank also here. There was a lady from Postbank. I think I'd seen her. Are you still there? You had the question that you are really ripping off the teachers and the policemen.
Yes, I had the question, but.
Oh. Okay, no, I'm sorry. I thought you talked about the banks. No. My apologies to Stanby Bank and to Postbank. I had mishad the question. But of course, the ones that are not regulated by Bank of Uganda, right? We have a representative from Umbra, Uganda Micro Finance Regulatory Authority. Are they here?
Yes.
Joseph is here.
Yes. So can you respond to that question? If these institutions are regulated by Umbra, they should be able to respond to that question. And then also, you talked about the product for rural women, a very good question. Now, I seem to recall that we have lent some money to youth, to women, under our SCF as well. So I'll ask Hajarah to say something on that. Now, on the grow projects, I'm sorry, Bank of Uganda is not participating in that project. So it's a good question you raised, but we will not be in a position to respond to it. But we can take it up with the concerned ministry when we get back to Kampala. So let me start with Ivan on the question of taxes. Ivan, please.
Yes, thank you very much. Indeed, there are taxes to the interest that is earned on treasury bills and bonds. And there is a withholding tax of 20% for the treasury bills that run from three months to one year. There is also a withholding tax of 20% for treasury bonds between two years and five years. So two years, three years, and five years attract a tax of 20%. However, if you're investing in treasury bonds of more than, of 10 years and above, so 10 years, 15, and 20 years, they meant employees investing in treasury bills and bonds? Oh, okay. I think there is some work that is being done around. Okay, so it is five years, 10 years, 15 years, and 20 years that attract 10% tax. So on the issue of the local government, I think there is some devolvement work that is being done around coming up with other products such as municipal bonds, infrastructure bonds, and that would probably address the issue on local governments being able to raise funds through the securities market. Thank you.
Thank you, Governor, for the call. So I'm going to respond to a question that came from the Colonel. I'm really happy that it came from you yourself. Wasalendo is an issue which is on my desk. I'm the Director in charge of non-bank financial institutions where circles fall. And I'll be honest with you that I spent a lot of time on Tuesday thinking about Wasalendo. The law came into place two years ago. Wasalendo qualifies to be under large circles, which are supervised by the central bank. But we are not seeing the Wasalendo team come to Bank of Uganda. And yet, they're asking for other products. They have come to say they want to do Forex Bureau and Money Remittance Business, which is also under my department. So I say now, they want this license, but they don't want to come out on the bigger issue. But I also want to share with you that there are many benefits of coming under regulation. One of them obviously is the security of the member funds. The other benefit is that you can access other funding opportunities, partnerships. The board members talked about collecting. Uh, the board members talked about collective investment schemes. Now you'll put in place proper governance structures, proper management, risk management. There's also, it also comes for deposit protection in the member to this institutional circles that qualify for regulations, but have delivered, let's stay that way. Because we have seen that there are many benefits of being in a circle that have been explained all through here. And I think Bank of Uganda is coming here to say, how do we help you to help yourselves? I think that's, for me, that's the message that I summarize for this day. I'm happy that this question has come out and I, I hope that now I'm recorded that we need Wasalando to come and ask for a license before they ask for other licenses from the central bank. Thank you.
Thank you, Makai. Um, Mr. Tuke, could you respond to a question of the retirement benefits, please?
Thank you so much, Governor. Uh, I'm Mark again from Ombra. And Ombra is the Uganda Retirement Benefits Regulatory Authority, also a government regulatory agency established by an Act of 2011 uh, to supervise the retirement benefit sector. Uh, we all know that at one point in time we'll have to retire. That's a mandatory thing. So we need to prepare for retirement in one way or the other. So Ombra supervises all entities that provide retirement benefits and the service providers that provide services uh, to that sector. So, uh, what do we do? Uh, we help you in case you have any complaints regarding your pension arrangements. I see, we may, maybe have example clocking retirement here. So when that time comes and you have any challenges, please feel free to approach Ombra. We are also having a, a table outside there. You can approach us after this session because of the time constraint, but we are available to answer any questions, uh, other follow-up questions related to the retirement benefit sector. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tuke. Um, Hajar, what can be done to help the rural women specifically?
Okay, I think the question was asked by, uh, Madame Kristina Kot. Yeah? Yes, um, we, when I hear you say rural woman, I believe you're talking about someone probably who doesn't know how to keep financial records, right? Maybe someone who doesn't have a bank account, someone who, who has hardly has anything but wants to, to progress. Um, the first thing I think that would be useful is to get together into groups because unity gives you strength. So once you get together within a group, make sure that you have at least one person who is conversant with, uh, with, with what is required, can approach the, the financial institutions participating in these schemes that I talked about. Maybe they could be credit institutions or even commercial banks. You have here 3 of them, yeah? You, who can approach them, ask them for their requirements. You need to realize that it might not be like immediately possible to do this, but you build it little by little. You get together, you, you agree on a project. Maybe we want to plant Sogam, I don't know, maybe Casava, or maybe want to, to rare poultry. This is how we will begin. Uh, so you can begin small with everyone collecting. It can be form of a circle. I'm just giving an example. It doesn't have to be exactly this. You get your small monies together. You've opened your bank account. It's in the group name. Slowly by slowly, you start having cash flows, you deposit profits. You first realize that maybe you will not gain so much, but you're building your financial history. Then there will come a point where you have strengthened financially, maybe over time. Then you can apply first for the block allocation loan. The block allocation, uh, allows you to apply for loans below 20 million, but you don't necessarily have to have a land title. If you have built your cash flows and they are good, you can actually have those records, uh, back you up. So there is a lot more we can, we can discuss. We can also have a bilateral on this out, uh, after the meeting. Thank you very much.
So we are going to take another round of questions. There is a gentleman. Vincent, yes.
Thank you, Governor. Uh, about, uh, the branches or expansion of services to the region. The bank has and tries to bring services closer to the people. We have currently 9 solid branches. And our last addition was a smaller version of the branch that is Lira. What they do is to receive deposits from commercial banks and then also pay up the withdrawals to commercial banks. Why we did that is that technology is changing and we want to maximize and leverage on technology. And so as things change, we are also mindful of the costs that are involved in building a full branch. And so we decided to go small as we study the environment. And likewise, we do the same for places where we see there is need. We've done a study here before. Some years back, we did one here. We did one in Hoima. And so it's one of those things that we've not really dropped. So we are still studying the environment. Hoima, Moroto are all promising areas. And I'm very sure that, uh, in future, we could have something close to Lira. Governor will add on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vincent. Um, in my closing remarks, I'll address those issues. Um, the Ombra representative, there was the issue of some of the lenders ripping off the policemen and the teachers. Uh, okay.
Uh, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, thank you so much, the Governor, the RADC, the Honorable and Protokop South. Good afternoon once again. By name, I'm called Joseph Eminko with my colleague Yunis Kaiza. We work from Ombra. Uh, what we need to know is that, uh, Ombra has a mandate to regulate license and supervise all the tier 4 microfinance institutions. When we talk about the tier 4 microfinance institutions, they are basically circles. As we know, we have the small circles and the bigger circles are supposed to be regulated by Bank of Uganda. We have the non-deposit-taking microfinance institutions. We have the self-help groups. And we have commodity and Islamic microfinance as well. But to address the issue of, uh, uh, my sister here on concerning issues why most of these institutions uh, delay to, to cut the cord. Sometimes it comes from, uh, the PCA, from public service. It delays maybe like 1 or 1 month most of the time. We have always received such complaints. But what we basically do, we address and call direct PCA or someone from public service. So if there is continuous, maybe takes maybe 2, 3, 4 months, it finds that there is a delay in remittance of salaries. But also I needed to, uh, give you our number if there, it's continuous. But also since we are here, we can definitely handle that query very fast. And then also we need to know if that institution is licensed by Ombra. And also I needed to, to re-echo the issue of, uh, uh, national IDs and ATM cards. Remember the President talked about the issue of national IDs. And also I want to re-echo again, the RADC is here. And one good thing, she comes from Kabiramaido. And we did the same in Kabiramaido. If there is any institution that takes national IDs and ATM cards, just close, arrest and take to police. That is what the people of Kabiramaido are doing. We were there like, uh, last month. If there are anyone that is not licensed and taking those high things, just close. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So we are going to take another round of 5 questions. And again, just your name and 1 question. So that will create a chance for the other person to ask as well. Thank you.
So please, you need to listen a bit. So thank you very much, Governor, for coming. You know, Emmanuel Tumisime was the governor whom I knew am a kada by training over NRM of 1986. After this time, I'm still a kada over NRM. But, uh, the President has some issues to deal with financial presence within the people, especially the poor people. All that we are reading here is very academic. Agricultural credit facility. This one must be understood by those who go to university, those who have gone elsewhere. Then also small business recovery fund. These people are people, those of that type. And then also you have now this one, the treasury bonds. You have heard from somebody who told you, oh, Jenny, I gave over 1,300, what all money? But the people who are outside there were almost like more than 2,000. Because, and if I were, my, my, my RADC was there, who came for this function to open the money which was kept by Italy, 10 million, and my, and my MP was there, 10 million euros to the Karamoja people. She announced, you are coming. And said, the Governor of, of Bank of Uganda is coming here. Please, all, everybody must go there. Over 2,000 each alone. And they are the same type. They make them one leg plus where you sit. And the time they were leaving, they just pick any good one, they move, they move. So the elders who walk very slowly, they could not get that, they, they, their chairs. They came and, right, they said, no problem. That was training. They gave them some, some of the pamphlets where they put it. They say, okay, with 1,000, 5,000, 5,000 and so on and so on. They came, but anyhow, you are coming was good. Now, the President has something to talk about. He talked about, what do we do about the young people? They used to give them money. In 1991, for those first kadas, those of us who started in 1986 kadas, he called, he said, I am going to Asia and bring many motorcycles and give the young people, these people who are crying for job from me. And he went and brought motorcycles. I think they are everywhere. In Moroto, I have counted them almost over 300 motorcycles. They are knocking people, they are making money. I even have a boy who was with me. Somebody gave him a motorcycle that you'll be making money. After 1 week, bring 10,000, 1 week, bring 10,000, 1 week. Then after about 6 months, he was about another motorcycle. I said, why did you get the money? He said, you know, when this man gave you a motorcycle, you give him 10,000 per, per week, per week. But Kumbi, then you go a long journey, you are given 60,000 once. You can come and pay for 1 month. Then the rest of the days, you are making money for yourself. Now the President is saying, how can we keep this money now? I'm telling you. How can the people have their money? He will say that 1,300 dollars every day, every day, every day. You know, he's also, he's also the chairman of the non-aligned, unaligned movement of countries which are below India and also you go towards, eh, towards China, all those countries and all of African countries. He is the chairman. And he is talking about, what do we do now to have the people to have their money? Now, he opened what we call PDM, Paris Development Model. I don't know whether it is Bank of Uganda who gives 100 million to every parish. Now this money is supposed to develop these people. But he also opened what you call Presidential Initiative for industrial hubs from every region. He also have 1 year in Kanwale. We produce girls and younger boys who go and learn skills. When they come with those skills, even with some of the equipment, they may not have money to do something that they have learned before. You are, you do your job now to see how you can increase money into the PDM. What is 100 million? For a wall of parish over about, about more than, more than 5,000 people. It's little. He said, no, don't reduce my, I'm talking about 4. Kumbi is talking about Baganda, those people who have little land, those Bagisu. But for us, it's too much. So please, where do we get money? For the 4 acres or for the 20 acres? For the poor person in the village there? The one who was here yesterday, the one you collected, you brought them here, you lost their chairs. So now, how do you now help those people? So that they can have money to plant enough food, they can have money to plant the grass, they can have money to maintain cows in 1 acre, they can have money for planting fruits. One of you are Vice President, and then, no, no, it's not a party, it's a party. Katapu, you know, Pene. I joke in this capon, I pick a, in Boba, a farmer care. Hello, sad, I don't know. Konye, you need to get, you have to capon. Konye, I'm wrong, who? What you do now, these poor people? Please. Here I go, you, here I go, Jenny, go there.
Thank you, Erida. Thank you so much.
Yes. So please, you look onto that theory, Adel. It is not a simple matter. But say, I'm a kada talking, and I would like, you know, I was trained in Libya. I went to, I went to Israel. I went to Tanzania, Tanzania. And I'm still a kada. I'm not employed. I don't want to give any job from me. But I will continue to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much. We'll have, um, 4 more for this round of questions.
Thank you very much. Nangiro Simon-Peter, the cultural leader. Mine is really a collaborative approach by the institutions you have down. Because imagine, until the Bank of Uganda comes, is when we have all learnt of very many products from the financial institutions. What are our friends, the commercial banks, who already around us, doing to make sure they take this message further? We cannot continue waiting until Bank of Uganda comes. Really, it is a, imagine at my level, I'm learning something new and I've been seated with the financial institutions here. So that means there is a lot of demand for this information to the population. Really, it will help us. When, Governor, you mentioned one thing, that attention is more important to institutions. Because it looks like they're just interested in earning. They are, we just got to put the money in the bank and we walk away. We didn't know we had all these products. Mine is to thank all of you for coming. Thank you very much, Bank of Uganda.
Thank you so much. 3 more questions to go.
Thank you so much. My name is Jerre Emmanuel. I research coordinator at OWC and Karamoja Fairs. Uh, I want to ask about the, the issue of the common bank, the common currency for East Africa. I'm talking about regional integration. The people of Karamoja, we border South Sudan, we border Kenya. And sometimes our currency is so small and it's challenging for transaction the other side. It's easier for them to spend their currencies here. But as we go across in South Sudan, in Kenya, it's challenging. They don't allow our, our currency here. So I think, uh, the regional integration part, the part of the common currency, it's something that, Governor, I wanted you to touch on. Thank you.
2 more questions. And one of those questions should be from a lady. So there's a gentleman here and a lady there. Okay. Okay, we can start with the lady here, then proceed.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is. Our peasant farmers. Even if we have groups of women who are farming, but we do not qualify to get these financial services from these commercial banks because there are conditions and policy.
Supportive of the local person down, but it's something that we can take out. And also picking from what governor presented, presented to other leaders in the bank and see how we come and support you. But in terms of other activities, if you are not only invested in mining, we support you diligently through circles. We know ladies strongly play in circles, governor. And this is not part of the question, but I want to address it because I know somehow it speaks to some of the things that have been asked. In Sanbiq, through our circle offering, Ajat, I forget your name, but somehow this is linked to what you presented. Through our circle offering, we offer loans to circles that are primarily dealing in agriculture with support of the SCF at 10%. For every registered circle that comes and presents a need to us, we offer them financing at 10%. For as long as we can confirm you are not in commercial business, commercial, I mean every member of that circle is dealing in agriculture, we offer them at 10% and the SCF backs us up. So I think, governor, I will leave the rest of the questions to the other commercial banks. I want to thank you. Alakarango, no, yeah? Okay, Postbank, do you want to add anything? Postbank Centenary?
As Postbank and Centenary come, want to remind you to complete the evaluation forms. The Bank of Uganda team will pass around to pick them. Kindly give us feedback. Thank you.
Good afternoon, all. All protocols observed. I would also like to add my voice, but this one is in regard to the third question. And I would like to give a practical example regarding quotations. I once came across a scenario whereby one of my clients had a loan. He came back to the bank. I needed some facility to help him with his sick wife who had actually breast cancer. We asked him to get the quotations. He came to the bank upon analyzing facilities. Upon paying off his loan, this gentleman went home. And after a few months, I think about a year, he came back to us. What happens this time? Needed more money. Upon again looking at his report, C R B report, we found that after taking, after almost 70%, upon paying off his loan, he had gone back to the same institution to do what? To borrow. So inasmuch as we talk of quotations and all that kind of thing, it all comes back to financial discipline. If you fail to have the financial discipline, it becomes hard for institutions to help you. The problem we have, a lot of our teachers actually are very supportive of the communities. We, to the extent that we go beyond what we're supposed to be doing. You find that this 50%, you spending 50% of what you earn, someone is going over and above what they're supposed to do. To the extent that you find that some people, okay, when you look at some of the accounts, sorry, I'm mentioning this. Someone's salary says about 500,000 or 600,000, but the take home is around 75,000 because of the multiple loans. Mr. Rio Code, sir, kindly come to us and we share these things, such that we can have some bit of financial literacy training for our civil servants. The most affected, to be honest with you, are the teachers, the police, if you are here, many of them are also affected. We also have the medical workers. I can assure you, at one point I came across a medical worker who was not taking, actually was taking about 25,000 shillings home. You're taking 25,000 shillings home, how you survive? How? So some of these things, yes, we may bring here, but they are very, very pertinent issues that we need to resolve. This begins by educating our civil servants. We do a lot of financial literacy training for some of our declines of ours. But over and again, you find people go back to what they are doing. So it becomes difficult. Then the other thing, what financial banks, I mean, what are banks doing for the common person? Of course, as a bank, we do the normal banking. The normal things we do as banks. We talk of the normal services, deposit taking, account opening, the self custody and a bit of it. Also give out loans to our clients. Other than that, we also do financial literacy training. I think part of it is already happening here. That one, let's try to live within our means. To Rupa there, a lot of people have been given licenses. Someone has this area. I've even seen those big licensed people fighting themselves because of this space. So it's about getting legally, you know, that legal documentation, then you come to the bank. However, we also have a few that we have given monies. To the best of my recollection, I think about, have about three or so people that are doing mining legally. They even have come with their licenses. But the majority of them have no legal documentation. So as a bank, my regulator is here. They will bear with me. If you're not legally doing something, there's no way I can support you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Governor and all protocol observed. Greetings from Postbank. As Postbank, our mission is to provide affordable and sustainable financial solutions that drive financial inclusion, to grow the economy socially and economically. So I want to begin with the last question of what are we doing to the low-income earners? Because our focus is to those to grow, to drive the financial inclusion is as Postbank, we are so passionate about the low-income earners. That is why you said that we are in all the areas. Our case in point is that we even have mobile vans that move around even to the local people that are down in the villages. So what I want to let you know is, for those that are not even aware, who don't have accounts, who may not do the banking, because that's one of the challenges we are facing is we, or they don't even have security. Let's say they don't have land or what. We have unsecured facilities we can offer to them. And we can go up to a tune of 2 million. At least if we have assessed what you're actually doing. If, say, you're a farmer, we shall come on ground to see what you're doing. And then we assess what farming you're doing. Or if it's a small shop you're owning down there, we shall come down there and understand. So we have unsecured to a tune of about 2 million. It means you can even qualify maybe for 500,000, 800, 1 million, 1.5. So that is what we are doing as Postbank. Because we are so passionate and want to grow closer to the people, even to the smallest unit down there. And then I'll not talk much about the quotation issue. I think my colleagues from Sanbiq and Centenary have mentioned a lot. But what I can say is, it is just for your own benefit. It is not good for you to be borrowed in a number of sectors. It will drain you. At the end of it all, you're not really gain anything from it. So then I shall say, bring this quotation, bring this one. We want to collect you in one unit so that we are able to manage you. And even you yourself, you'll be able to manage yourself financially. So that is the reason. Thank you.
It becomes difficult for a commercial bank to deal with you because on one place they're dealing with you. So I think, let's try to ensure that we, you know, we get formalized. Now, in wrapping up, I will address some of these issues. Now, there was a gentleman from MTN who was here. You're the one? You're from MTN? Yes, can you tell us, what are you doing through your mobile services to promote savings at the bottom of the pyramid? Because Andrew asked a very, very important question that the president gave these young men money to buy border borders. They are making money, but they are looking for where to save the money. So how are the fintechs, the telecom companies that are dealing with mobile money, how are they helping the people down there, right, to promote savings? Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity, governor. My name is Philip Odoi. I support as the regional commercial head for the north. All protocol observed. At MTN, we are privileged to have the benefit of having the National Payment Systems Act that came up. Since 2020, it has created two opportunities for us. One of them, synergies to be able to work with not only one bank, but several other partners in there. So currently, we have up to four micro-loan solutions that we offer. The traditional one that was known was more cash, where we have a partner known as NCBA. Now we have more cente, we have more pesa that are part of the platform. In there, we've been able to collaborate with a post bank that is present. And we also have KCB Bank that is present. The good news, well, the rest of the bankers have been able to avoid the one inch. At MTN, through our mobile money service, we can actually lend between 3,000 shillings up to 3 million shillings. However, what is important is that when our customers start using the SIM card they have, we monitor their usage in three levels. One is how you use your voice, how you use your data, how you also use mobile money. That creates a favorable credit rating for you to fall in that tier of borrowing between 3,000 to 3 million shillings among the four products that we have. The good news, we also encourage saving. And on our MTN platform, you can actually set your mobile money account to automatically deduct money from your own account and put it on your 7024. And of course, a dividend is also going to be declared and shareholder declared. And shareholders that are in this room for which we visited not many years ago will have a notification in their phone this afternoon. Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you very much. So Andrew, thank you, thank you very much. So Andrew, there are opportunities for those people at the bottom of the pyramid to save money. So I think maybe what we need is more sensation that these, you know, that these instruments exist. They can save money on a daily basis in their phones. So that's what we are doing. Okay. But I thought it's just a wallet. I mean, you know, you have your PIN number, everything. So unless they steal their phone with your PIN number, you know? But Andrew, yeah. But Andrew, I think these are some of the initiative. They might not be perfect, but for a beginning. You know, a journey of a thousand miles starts with a step. Yes, so let's encourage them to use those saving avenues like the mobile phones. It will help them going forward. Okay, all right. Common currency. The gentleman who talked about foreign, what is his name?
Across the region. However, this also comes with an economic fact that there's a criteria that countries have to adhere to or to meet for this to get operation. So for instance, there's a criteria that headline inflation across the region should be averaging around 8%. And then there's also this criteria in terms of debt. So we're looking at in terms of fiscal debt should be at around 3% of GDP. And then there's also a criteria whereby we're talking in terms of foreign reserves. So each country was supposed to have at least on average 4.5 months of import cover. So there's that criteria that was set up across. Then in terms of overall debt, there's a question of at least 50% of GDP. So that was a criteria that was set. So countries have been trying to meet this goal. And we're also mindful of the fact the number of countries have come on board. We have our neighbors from Congo that have come on board. We have our neighbors from South Sudan. So this protocol, the target was by 2024, this should have gone operational. So that was the dream. A number of countries have tried to get this criteria in place. However, we note that down the road, in the wisdom of the community, they felt this whole project was either to accommodate for the new upcoming countries and all the other effects of, for instance, we had COVID that affected a number of countries. So countries had to borrow to meet the COVID challenge. Countries have to respond to the shocks we had, the case of Ukraine. So all those shocks have affected some of these goals and then also taking on board the new country. So with this in mind, in the wisdom of the community, they have felt this project should be postponed.
The Honorable wants to say something.
Thank you very much. There is something that touched me about the plight of the civil servants who have acquired loans from banks, from money lenders and other financial institutions. To the extent that they are barely nothing left on their payslip at the end of the month. This is something very, very bad. And you know, it has led to a lot of absenteeism. Civil servants like teachers, as we have already highlighted, the health workers, and then of course, the security forces, soldiers. Now, this affects the output, work. Because if somebody is not settled, the output, the delivery of work outputs will be very, very low. Sometimes they even run away, as we have observed. The story is not different from parliament. Even as members of parliament, people come, they campaign, they go through, they are sworn in. Induction takes place for one full week. They call Bank of Uganda to teach us, I can say teach in quotes, to teach us how to handle money. And not just squandering money. At the end of the day, when they remove you from parliament, you go home when you are even more poorer than you join. And then you become a laughing stock. You say this one, you look at her, look at him. He was in parliament for five years, 10 years, but look at how he is. So you become a laughing stock. So what parliament has done, and I think that should be something which local governments, especially the human resource, should borrow. What parliament does before you apply for a loan, you have to produce your payslip. Payslip, which would accompany your application form for the loan. The payslip of the current month or the previous month, which will show the balance of money in your payslip. Then that one will guide the banking institution, whether to give you a loan or not. So what some people did, they went to the banks, members of parliament. They went and exhausted the money. After that, they started dodging now because there's nothing in the payslip. They now go to the money lenders. The money lenders around Kampala. You go here, you get money, you go here, you get money. At the end of the day, when the time for loan repayment comes, there is barely nothing on your account. So what parliament did was say, look here, our members are suffering. It is even affecting attendance of plenary. Some people dodge because there are people waiting for them. Somewhere there, they, they, they call them, what, bailiffs? Bailiffs around the gate, you see them in plain clothes. If you enter there, you have to look around before you enter. Because that's where they will grab you from. You will be able to dodge them elsewhere, but at the gate of parliament, you may not dodge them. So what parliament did, they said, now accountant, human resource, let's handle this thing. Before you apply for a loan, you go to the accounts, they give you a payslip. So that payslip is what you use to process the loan. So I think the human resource in local governments, for teachers, for health workers, for the police, for the army, I've not heard about the police and the army. They have their loan circles. But for teachers and other civil servants, human resource police demand for the payslip. Banks can print the payslip before you apply for a loan. Now you allow this teacher, you allow this health to apply for a loan in a postbank. The same civil servant is applying for a loan in Centenary. The same civil servant has gone to. Now, when the salary is finished, they go to the money lenders. Leshogo is the one who should bring your ATM. Now, it's very bad, it is too nasty. So human resource department, save our teachers, save our civil servants. Don't allow them to go on rampage, borrowing money everywhere. That, monitor the balance on their payslip so that you protect them. They are under pressure because they have a lot of financial stress in the villages and where they stay. Let us save our teachers, I think.
Especially now in Karamoja, we are doing business just on our own. We are not supported by any bank mostly. No bank can support this small business here in Karamoja. Because in Karamoja, some of our lands, which is titled, you cannot get a loan. Because in Karamoja, who will buy your land? Even the government, even the bank cannot take half your title. But because nobody can buy the land. So that's why we are coming up now saying that even in Karamoja, we can also sell our land to anybody. Because the land has gone up. Now, business community here, they are not trained. We are doing business here. And I'm representing here, and we are representing the Chamber of Commerce. Because business here is still low. Good enough, I've heard somebody saying he's a regional manager, starting from Lugazi to Karenga. And he has never said about kind of things. We have never been trained. We are just talking on our own to try to get loans from the bank. But these are things which will be trained the people to understand about business. To understand what is business. So that's when you get a loan from the banks. Because for us, we cannot run away. We are in Uganda, we are Ugandans. We have so many borders. Even now, we have a border, we have Sudan border, which is closed, which is just white elephant, no business is going there. The border is closed. You can't bring anything from Kenya. You can't sell anything from Kenya, from Uganda to Kenya. You cannot, because the border is closed. There is nothing being sold. Because people have to train what business to do. So you can do business that you can go between Kenya or between Sudan. If you go to other borders like this here, you go to a border of Congo, there is a lot of business going there. This is what I'm trying to ask you, governor, that this is a very wonderful thing you have done to Karamoja today. And I wish you extend these things to the whole of Karamoja towns. Because here today in Moroto, you have called only leaders of Moroto, but not the whole of Karamoja, especially the business community. Because there are people who are doing business here who cannot do such kind of business. Because they are not, they are not.
They're using different names from that of the main company, Zara World. So he's personally worried that this company, this company's drugs are not licensed by the National Drug Authority. Unlike Zara Dollar, it might end up like Bridgewater. So maybe, Madam Mara DC, you need to take this on board. That is a company called Zara World that is not licensed with the National Drug Authority, but it is selling drugs. We talked about illegal activities. Maybe you need to take interest in that. Maybe you need to take interest in that. So that's on the Zara Dollar, it is the same response that we had for Bridgewater. So we're not going to repeat that. And then, the other one is, can Bank of Uganda work with local SEOs, CSOs to increase on information sharing with local community? CEOs have a direct link in their work with different categories and individuals across the different communities. So I don't know how you want CSOs to work with Bank of Uganda to share information on local communities. It's not very clear. Maybe the person who has it, we can maybe clarify that. But from what's written here, it's not clear. And then the other one is got to do with, I think this one was addressed exhaustively by Hajera, that what criteria was used to determine small businesses, small businesses that benefit from the Business Recovery Fund. As many businesses owned by Ugandans don't make a turnover of 10 million, yet they employ other Ugandans too. So how can they be helped? I know there's a criteria in terms of the turnover. I think it is maximum. At the category of business owners, I am asking about, I think he's the one, and she's always asking. Alright. Does Bank of Uganda have a corporate social responsibility to offer vulnerable societies in Karamoja? I think this is the same I gave you. And then the other one is, maybe Huntington, you'll answer this one. How secure are agent banking businesses? And then two, I think we addressed this one earlier on, the non-disclosure of government products by their banking institutions. Again, it was asked by Buana Mayor, could the commercial banks present here in tell this gathering, how much of the government products have you offered or have you extended to Karamoja? In particular, since you are based in Karamoja, you are based in Moroto, do you have the numbers of how much of the SEF, how much of the SBR, has your bank extended to the people in Moroto or in the Karamoja region? And then, he's also asking, what is a proposal for hustlers through an app access, like a phone? Like the Mamambogas, border border industry, chapati sellers, goat and chicken roasters? I think the gentleman from MTN answered that question, that there are some facilities in form of microloans, micro savings, and sometimes even micro insurance. So I think that has been addressed. So Huntington, you will just talk about the security of the agent banking. And then Kenneth, you will talk about the CSR. And then the questions that were asked in the last round. Again, this is about the government products, which the banks are going to respond. And then Alex, you talked about supporting small businesses, but you remember the Chamber of Commerce. Have you talked to your Chamber of Commerce, first of all to educate the, you know, the business owners under that umbrella? Because I want believe that even the Uganda Chamber of Commerce has got a role to play in educating. Okay? So, before we ask the commercial banks what they're doing, maybe let me put this question to you. What is a Uganda Chamber of Commerce doing about educating its members? And then after that, then maybe it will be easier for the commercial banks to weigh in on what you've done. Is that okay, Alex? And then, Richard, I call, I didn't get your question quite well. You were talking about Bank of Uganda instruments in something? Okay. But let me get the responses, starting with Huntington, Hajera, and then Kenneth, and then the commercial banks here in. Huntington, please.
Good afternoon to you all, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Governor, for guiding us through this session thus far. And for the audience, for the feedback you've given us. We heard a lot of it yesterday. And I've also seen today your responding, which means the topics being addressed are very relevant to you and they affect you as individuals. Now, the question of concern to me right now is about agents. As you realize, we have three banks here. Centenary, Stan Big Bank, and Post Bank. Yet if you look at the leaflet on the SEF, we have over 30 institutions. So not all these institutions are able to come and open shop in Moroto. What Bank of Uganda did because of the demand for financial services, we came up with regulations to allow supervised financial institutions to come up with agents to conduct business on their behalf in areas where they can't open shop. But one of the features that you identify an agent is that they will have, for some of these agents, they can also accept to share loan application documents. Now, beyond that, you would have to go to the bank premises directly because there the range of services is much wider. And they will give you guidance. Now, what Bank of Uganda does periodically, we send our teams to look at how these agents are working. For someone becomes an agent of a financial institution, they must have a registered business. For example, retail shop, a supermarket, mobile money outlet. I think those are the common ones we see across the country. Primarily, you must have a business that you've been running before you become an agent. Why? Because run agent banking business, you must have capital of your own. You must have trust in the community. People must have confidence in you to trust and believe that you're actually an agent of the bank. Because the bank will not come and address a congregation as big as this to explain that this is our agent. This one is not. But yes, I would encourage each one of you, wherever you are, if you come across agents, they are allowed and authorized by Bank of Uganda to conduct business on behalf of banks they display on in their premises. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Huntington. Maybe before Hajera comes, Josephine, you, there's a question on Capital Markets Authority?
So thank you very much. And I think the question was, how does capital markets help governments regulate and determine prices for businesses? For example, education, transport, and health. But as I said, capital markets, capital markets is predominantly, our mandate is around people who play in the capital markets. And what a capital market is, I say, this is where we sell financial products. The financial products we have are either the treasury bills and bonds, there are corporate bonds, there are shares, there are CISs. These other products that come under education, transport, and health are regulated by different agencies. So for example, health and the health practitioners, that is by Ministry of Health. Education is licensed by the Ministry of Education. And as well, transport also have their own arrangement. So, as CMA, we are not directly able to influence the pricing for any of the products or health, transport, or education. But also, government of Uganda has taken the approach of a liberal market, where businesses are allowed to set their prices demanding. So government is not taking a stance of controlling businesses. So really, the pricing that is charged is set by the business themselves. And government has almost little they can do because of the policy decision they took to make this a free market. And there are benefits of a free market, where you'll attract people to come and participate. So, long and short, we are not able to really influence that. But I just wanted to add a few more comments. While I presented, I said that you can contact CMAs. I would like to give the number for anyone who wants to contact CMA for any activity, particularly our security people and the leadership. The number is 0414, And you can also go to our website. There is, you will find the number. You'll even find a place where you can raise your complaint. But before I let go of this microphone, just to reiterate, please ask anyone who comes to you to show you their license. And then you can call us to confirm if that license is valid. You can also take it to police. Police can help you confirm that the license is valid. Andrew, you talked about youth, and they don't have anywhere to invest. I think we will engage with you on a one-on-one, where we can arrange to come and meet those youth and talk to them, tell them about the opportunities that are there within Uganda for them to invest. So I'll be in touch with you after that. We can resolve that. Thank you.
Right, thank you so much, Josephine, for that. So let me ask Hajera, and then followed by Kenneth, to respond to questions.
Thank you very much. For the question on whether there is financing for planting trees and buying land, it's regardless whether it's by the teachers asking or anyone else. Those are activities that are not permitted for financing within the agricultural credit facility. But maybe what I need to highlight is that this is a public-private partnership. So there are stakeholders here and the participating financial institutions who are contributing 50% in term... If you're looking at commercial banks, they are also looking out for their own interests as well in terms of the cost of credit, how viable it is, how quick are you going to get the returns? If you look at the tree planting activity, really, it's not an activity where you will be able to pay back until you really have the trees grown. So unfortunately not.
Thank you, Hajera. Kenneth, please.
Thank you, Governor. So I have a question from Linus Lima on whether the bank's corporate social responsibility covers scholarships for the poor and after disamment of youth, whether the corporate social responsibility can provide psychological support, skills training, and grants for capital? So Bank of Uganda has a corporate social responsibility and donations policy. But the areas that the corporate social responsibility and donations policy addresses are those areas that are aligned with our strategy. And within there, we provide communal support for health, health that benefits communities and not individuals. Under education, we work with institutions of higher learning. And if you have been watching TV, you must have seen the university quiz funded by Bank of Uganda as one of the activities we cover there to help impart research skills, innovation, speaking confidence, but also knowledge sharing. We also support that with other partners because we are very concerned about sustainability. So we avoid doing any corporate social responsibility projects that are new or that do not have other partners. Because we believe, like the governor said, if you want to go far, we go together. So unfortunately, we do not have within our corporate social responsibility programs funding for poor, bright students. But maybe in the next strategy, this is something that could come through. I think there is always room. And also, we don't have anything on psychological support for youth that have been disammed. There is also a similar question, again, under CSR, whether we can provide capacity building on land rights, education, and land documentation procedures, local economic development, entrepreneurship and business skills, and change management. We provide capacity building, but not under corporate social responsibility. We do this under our stakeholder engagement. But we don't go land rights. This is outside our area of expertise and mandate. However, we tackle topics of economic development, entrepreneurship, and business skills under financial literacy. We have a number of programs, including training of financial literacy trainers. And this cover the whole country. So if you'd like to have more information about our capacity building activities under financial literacy, we have Alex here. Alex, please raise your hand. He can give you more details on the arrangements we can make under this kind of capacity building. We also do capacity building in forests like this, town hall meetings, exhibitions. Under stakeholder engagement. In fact, if you had been here, you would have seen how we engaged with the people from the grassroots. The last question that I'm going to respond to was, what is BOU doing to ensure important communication or information reaches the grassroots? From the statistics that are available, the widest medium of communication is radio. And for that reason, we've prioritized radio for reaching the grassroots. So you'll find us in any week appearing on radio talk shows and addressing specific issues that from our research, we know that are important. We also do a lot of exhibitions. So when there are regional exhibitions, we'll have a stall where we will do engagement with whoever comes through. We also do town hall meetings such as this across the entire country. We also have workshops that are dedicated to specific topics. And some of these workshops are outside Kampala. They will go all the way to the various districts. I think those were the questions. Thank you.
Okay, Kenneth, thank you, thank you very much. So maybe as we bring this into a close, let me address some issues that arose earlier on, where I said I would give some few remarks. These are the ones I consider quite strategic. The issue of the common currency. I think Dr. Sunday explained why we don't have a common currency up to now because there's a convergence criteria which has not been realized by all the members of the EAC. But notwithstanding that, if you went to any border post today, you will always find people exchanging money. There are Forex bureaus along these border posts. And if there are no Forex bureaus, there are some people who are exchanging money. Now, of course, some of those guys may not be licensed, so that is the downside of it. But I know that in most border stations, there are Forex bureaus. If you went to any Forex bureau, you'll find exchange rates of the major partner countries are quoted in there. So we have allowed a situation where a market-determined exchange rate is facilitating trade. I'm sure if you went to, what is the main border post, Uganda, South Sudan? Ellegu. There must be a Forex bureau there that changes South Sudanese pounds into... There must be a Forex bureau there that changes South Sudanese pounds into, into, you know, into Uganda shillings. And likewise, even Kenya. So I think in the meantime, that is facilitating the trade. Now, in terms of the gold, yes, Bank of Uganda is going to start a gold purchase program and mainly from circles and some commercial miners as well. And the criteria is you need to be registered. Again, for us to, to buy gold from you, you need to have a license to buy gold. Now, we are going to involve commercial banks. In fact, we have been having a discussion with the commercial banks. They may not want to participate in the gold mining, I mean, buying, but they can participate in, you know, in providing equipment and improving the conditions with the artisanal miners are operating in so that we observe the environmental aspects of this gold mining. And because it's Bank of Uganda buying the gold, arrangements are being made that for when the commercial banks extend maybe credit for maybe equipment, for the improvement of the, the operating environment, we'll see how to offset those kinds of monies when we're paying the gold miners. So again, this is something that the commercial banks should seize in order to, to support the local artisans. And then also, under our ESG program, we are requiring now commercial banks to be reporting to us what are they doing in terms of becoming ESG compliant? In terms of supporting the person at the bottom of the pyramid? In terms of supporting their economic well-being? In terms of protecting the environment? We are requiring them to begin reporting under the, the submission to the central bank. And the first of such a submission is going to be at the end of March this year. So we want to see, we, we believe that with this, we are going to see an increased role of the commercial banks and other supervised financial institutions in supporting the activities of the people at the very bottom of the pyramid in preserving the environment. They may not be doing it directly, but they need to demonstrate that they're doing it, maybe using other institutions like credit institutions, micro depositing institutions, fintechs like Momo and Watavio. So we want to see that they are participating in this national agenda. And then, of course, the other one that I want to emphasize is what was addressed by Mackay. The law was passed regarding some large circles. These large circles that are fairly big, of which was a land is one of them. To date, I think we have licensed one circle to be supervised by Bank of Uganda. And there are two or three applications being processed by Bank of Uganda for supervision of these large circles. So we encourage, there was a land also to apply so that they become supervised by Bank of Uganda. If the police circle meets the criteria in terms of the size that was set by the law, we encourage all of them to apply so that they can get licenses to do broader or to provide broader financial services. And I also want to emphasize the issue of the, of the regional branch in Moroto. You see, right now, we have only three banks in Moroto. Stand Big Bank, Centenary, and then Post Bank. Now, we need to weigh, uh, what is the cost of establishing a branch here? Vis a vis the demand for those services, right? And then also, if you want banks from Soroti, from Kumi, from maybe Sirohanku, all right, to be using, uh, Moroto, we need to weigh, is the option of Mbari Currency Center, is it very costly now that we need to come to Moroto? Take for example, Soroti, Mbari is about 100 kilometers, right? I don't know the distance from, uh, from Soroti to Moroto. 160. So if it's 160, so surely, where, where does it make sense for Soroti commercial banks to come? Is it to Moroto or to Mbari? So there are all those costs that we need to weigh. So yes, the idea of a regional branch is okay, but it needs to be supported by a business. So I want to believe that as the business activity in Moroto picks up, as we see mining begin to pick up, as we see more economic activity picking up like cattle fattening, you know, dairy products, all these minerals coming on board, I'm sure there will be more, more commercial banks coming to, to Moroto to support those activities. And also, let's not forget the point that was made by Ms. Muggiza, the role of technology. Technology can reduce the demand for fiscal branch. So we need to analyze all those things. That what is it that technology has failed to do that we want to have a branch? So again, it will take a study. The latest study we had did not justify having a branch. And that was the issue with also Hoima. But we are continuously reviewing this. If there's a business case for it, I think we will certainly consider it. And for emphasis again, please, 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 don't use your identity card as a collateral. It takes two people to tangle. If you use your ID as a collateral, you are not going to blame the other party for asking. You have been warned that it's not in order. It is illegal to do it, right? I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, but if you were to do that, maybe I would also ask you, why did you do it? First of all, it's illegal. Anyway, and these online things that are not registered, please, 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 don't engage in any attractive, seemingly attractive offers that we can pay you this amount of money in one week. That is very tempting and the risk is high. You are bound to lose. So I thought I would emphasize those points. And on that note, I would really want to thank you for powering up your hearts, for asking us all the questions. There was no big question. There was no small question. It was what was in your hearts. Atakeer alakar ononoi, annoes, annoes apukorikustauon, aingisngisonyo, aingiseta, yalam ononoi, idaredeke. Let's add, Governor, another round of applause. Thank you very much, Mr. Governor. And now we are moving towards the end of this town hall meeting. And we want to hear from Moroto District Local Government. So we have the Speaker of Moroto District Local Government, Droid Honorable Cesar Akol, who is going to move a vote of thanks in appreciation of the leaders who have turned up for this town hall meeting.
Thank you very much. Before I proceed, and because I'm moving this vote of thanks on behalf of all the entire leadership of Moroto District, I would want to ask the councillors and LC3 chairpersons at the district and at municipal council to just wave. Thank you very much. Now that Chairman Fyver has come, and I was already here, I beg for your intelligence that I ask him to just wave at you and say a few words after I have made the following remarks. First, yeah, I'm, it is, okay. I wanted to first say, in 1994, there is a gentleman called Bill Gates. I know some of you are familiar with Bill Gates, who made a statement that banking is necessary, but banks are not. And when I tried to understand that statement, I was very perplexed. And I tried, you know, for us in Karamoja, we try to contextualize everything into our own local understanding. And I decided to, to believe that the people of Karamoja understood banking by way of their own practice. As you know, we have granaries, we're able to dry our foods and preserve them. And in the same spirit as modern banking, it is done in the spirit of financial security, of access to credit, facilitating transactions, and so on. That is the same spirit that we had. It's just that we did not have facilities like banking halls that are here today to, to, to talk about banking. So I am only trying to say that the idea has been there, but the practice has been a bit different. And for us, even if banks come and do what, for as long as the products are not customized to a simple understanding of the local population, it's going to be difficult. That's why I have to be brutally honest. It's going to be difficult. Some products can be sold somewhere. Others cannot be sold in other places. I just wanted to emphasize that. And with those few remarks, I now want to take this single honor and privilege. First, to thank the governor for really showing that level of humility to come up to Moroto, interact with us, take our questions, respond to our questions together with your team here. Thank you very much, our governor, for being that kind of person. This is a good beginning for us. And I want to ask the Chairman LC5 to step forward and salute the congregation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cesar. Thank you. Good afternoon. Moroto, good afternoon. Bank of Uganda, good afternoon. Papa Governor, I want to, to welcome you to Moroto on your team. We have been waiting for banks, but Uganda Bank has come to Moroto. Uganda, Bank of Uganda has come to Moroto. I think this, this has been the awaited one. In Karamoja, we have named the people. Apa, apa, apa. Bank of Uganda, I want you to come and do some good research. Want you to do diversifying a cow to money. I may be having 100 cows, but they are just there. But I feel this banking system can improve, can change their mind to something better. Governor, one asset is missing here. One good asset is missing here, in the name of peace. There is an asset called peace. It's ever fought, ever fought, ever struggled. But for any programming to take place well, I want to argue that much as we have come for business, can Bank of Uganda have a peace component in your area of operationality? Because your clients will be suffering. Short of doing that, then you not realize the good turn of your clients. I want to tell you that the Bank of Uganda that has come to Moroto, Karamoja this time, see this year, this today, they had to far go all the assignments just to come and celebrate and stand with you in ensuring that the launch and the bringing of this Bank of Uganda is accepted. This is a sign of acceptability. Africana, Wathele, I'm always loved by my, by the rest of my brothers, the chairperson of this region, that all meetings are held in Moroto. For choosing this village, doctor, what is the name of this village? Awemuju, as the best village, as the best avenue for this exercise today, Africana Wathele, you have made Moroto better. You have made Moroto well. And to this effect, Moroto, be proud. All the regional programming to Karamoja, all the heads, head offices are in Moroto. So we take the east of putting to employment, whether being T-boilers or what, but we take the east amount over that one. So, and so do Bank of Uganda. To this time, I want to thank everybody. I want to say, all that has been talked today, we take it in good faith. It has been an awaited programming. Now that it's Anateker's son and daughter, and the rest of the teams who have stepped into this land, that Mount Moroto has been praised for the good of our scenario, I think Moroto Mountain will blaze as well. We shall receive good showers. But the church, uh, the Roman Catholic Church is moving ahead to greenish that mountain to the best of our former glory. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We are very, very happy. And we are going to stand and to support this institution. Alakara no way, emri akoliye. Mata we, alakara yo no way. Is that all? Agologinyan? Okay. Ebba agologinyo kogang, the meeting is at Jan. Good lunch. I wish you all.
Robert, where are you? Okay. Before, before we go into the official closing, which is the prayer and the national anthems in reverse order, there, there is a small ceremony that has been requested for by the mayor and the RDC. I'll ask, I mean, the honorable MP of this area and the RDC. And I'll ask the honorable MP to tell us more about this ceremony.
Thank you very much, Ken. After deliberating and having a very fruitful, fruitful and productive discussion, we say we are better enriched than before. And there is every reason for us to pride over it. We now have knowledge and the Book of Oseya, chapter 24, verse 5. They are saying, knowledge is better than strength. The Bible says it. This is a book of proverbs, yes, a book of proverbs. Sorry for that. Book of proverbs. You, you can have strength, but if you don't have knowledge, the other one overturns the other one, puts it down. So the Book of Proverbs, today we have gotten knowledge. I must say, this knowledge should not be left to waste. Let us put this knowledge into practice and we make our lives better. We make our region better. We make our families better. We make our businesses better. But because we have had a fruitful day, we are supposed to crown it in our culture, the Karamoja culture, to appreciate the Bank of Uganda, Governor, and his team, the team well marshalled. I think they have picked the best ones there to come for this engagement in Karamoja. So we are very, very happy. Now, in the Karamoja culture, when there is a traditional vestment, a traditional vestment is a symbol of acceptance into that society. A traditional vestment is an appreciation for the contribution, for the work that you are doing. And a traditional vestment is also to accept you into our family, culture of Karamoja. So the traditional vestment that we are going to carry out here is to show that is to show that all the staff of Bank of Uganda, starting with the boss, you are now Karamoja by osmosis. Even if you have not been crowned, this symbol, the whole world, the whole of Uganda will see, these are now Karamoja. So we are going to start. We are going to have the Bank of Uganda, Governor. The elders will give you a name, the Karamoja name. And for us, we give names according to the seasons and the economic activity at that time when you visited Karamoja. The elders will come. I'm not in the better position to give you the name. And I ask you, the staff of Bank of Uganda, to keep reminding the governor not to forget the name. When you go to his office for signing of your document, you address him in the name the Karamoja are going to give him. And we request Michael to accept that name. To not be insult, accept that name when this staff address you. Accept that name. May I therefore invite the elders to come and do this? Because I have not been crowned yet to do that function. It is elders. Honorable Doctor Sam Perir, you can step forward and come and crown your nephew. Gwala alo Papa, kinyonyo, lochin kun, lokukun, accompanied by Muse Napaja. Hello, hello, hello. Lokut.
So they give you the name. You have visited here when it is dry and it is windy. The name is Lokut. Don't forget. Lokut. Thank you very much. Yeah, Lokut. And then where is the girl?
The girl, the girl is the general council. General council. Kristin, question I.
Hey. Ah, Robert Tanapek. Ah, Tanapek Lokut. Any allo. Ah, Robert, ah, okwa. Hey. Itamara buyo, okwa. Ah. Ah, ucham yo.
Thank you, our elders. They wrap up the shit when you are visiting here. When you go for visit, a visit, you are not supposed to disturb people to give you a bed and shit for covering yourself. You go when yourself contain.
That is, they are still for sleeping and.
Back now, I'm coming to visit you, I need a sheet for covering at night? No. You should go self-contained. Ah ha.
Give me the stick.
Now they sit.
Abela. Abela. Uto.
The sit is a sign of leadership, Bank of Uganda.
About, I recagin.
The cap. And the stick is a sign of authority, authority. So this is Lokut. You are welcome to the Karamoja society.
Na bero, na peyok. Yeah, yeah.
Now, the council, council, council.
Napeyok, napeyok. Okay, Ken.
Now, in Karamoja, it is not the men to crown the women. The men crowd men. Women crowd women. Don't cross the line. Tovok, tavaku main. And it should be a senior woman, not just a young girl. Uh uh. Not a young girl cannot come and crown the old woman. No. Napeyok is a visitor. You have come the time when there were very many visitors around. So your name is Napeyok. Napeyok. Lokut. And Napeyok. Thank you. Now, we want now the shepherds. You know, the boys, when the elders have told them, go there and look after cows. We now want to invite the shepherds of Muse Lokut, together with Mama, the general council, Napeyok. We now want to invite the executive director administration. That one. These are the shepherds of Lokut. Step forward. You are crowned. Lodim. So we are having Lodim being addressed.
Lodim, the one that.
Lodim means he has come at the time when the gardens have been cleared, ready for cultivation and this decision. People are clearing gardens because the rains. So I hope you know your name, Lodim. This business of calling funds, that what was my name? What was my name? We shall give them in writing, the spelling and the meaning. We shall give them the names. After that, we shall have director, agricultural credit, SCFI. Kumbesh is just near here. Mama, you come forward. So director, SCFI, the elders have given the name.
Nakwang, nakwang.
No, you know, nakalonga and nakachada are the same. It's nakwang. Nakwang is purity, white. Purity.
Purity.
Purity, white. So these are our new Karamoja. And then there is a.
Purity, pure, you are pure.
And then there is one shepherd, director, commercial banks. Hiya. Director, commercial banks, apa apa. Our money. Go there.
Ah, is radio. Warakide.
Now, the elders have agreed that the director of commercial banks, Yoling. Yoling means the way is open. It's called Lorot. Lorot is the path, Yoling, that this path should be open. So director, commercial banks, we want our commercial banks to be in the right path. Your name is, Karamoja name is Lorot. L-O-R-O-T. Lorot means straight path. The blessings are. So ladies and gentlemen, as we prepare to take the picture, I invite you to give a round of applause to welcome this senior Karamoja now to our society. Galakara, no way. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. Galakara, galakara, no way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let us once again clap for the newly initiated Karamoja Jones in the house, headed by the governor, Bank of Uganda.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And the name is Reukut. Thank you, thank you. Okay. We are, after that, we are going to handle the closure of the ceremony. Thank you. Thank you so much. And congratulations, Mr. Governor and the team. Thank you. For me, next time, sure. Thank you. The next thing we are going to do is to pray. But before we pray, I just wanted to announce that the evaluation forms which were placed in your information packs, kindly make sure that they are filled and put them on top of the tables. The Bank of Uganda will come and pick them later. For those of you who have given us feedback already, thank you so much. We appreciate. Two, we are going to have lunch served at three different serving stations and you'll be guided as to where you can go and serve lunch. Then three, there is a modest allowance for the leaders who are invited to this town hall meeting, approved by the governor, Bank of Uganda. Let us clap for him. And it will be given to you, Jonah, who is just behind there. That man, I don't know who initiated him. I've not seen. That man will be handling that bit of the arrangement with a, to give a modest transport allowance or refund to leaders who are extended to invitations. Let me now invite Kanon and Lokiru. We started with the Catholic. We are closing with the Church of Uganda. So Kanon and Lokiru is representing Karamoja, Daisies Church of Uganda. Please come and lead us in a word of prayer. And after that, we'll immediately stand up for the anthems.
Praise God. God is good and all the time. Let's rise up and pray. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Father in heaven, want to thank you for this time. We thank you for this opportunity that we are able to share the word from your servants. We thank you for the governor and the team that they are able to come down here to Karamoja to visit us in this land that you have given us. Father, it's another opportunity that you provided us in Karamoja. Father, we glorify your holy name because this is another day that you set apart for us. Father, we want to commit everyone who is living here to your hands. We pray for safe journey, mercies for everyone. And we commend every discussions unto your hands that Lord in heaven, we shall be able to trickle it down to the people whom we present here. We thank you and we honor you in Jesus' name we are prayed.
Thank you so much. Kindly stay, remain standing for the anthems. Kindly remain standing for the anthems. DJ. DJ, we are waiting for you to guide us in the singing of the anthems. DJ, go ahead, please. You may get seated. Thank you. We are now going to have a group photo. And Nakasi is going to lead the team to the photo point. So Nakasi is over there and she heads protocol at Bank of Uganda. She's going to guide us on how we can take a group photo. So for the rest of us, we can be witnesses to this. My name once again is Robert Wagonza and it's been a pleasure for me to be your emcee today. Thank you. So we are going to take our photo. And after that, we are going to serve lunch. And we have three serving points for lunch. And I've been informed that each one of us received a coupon. If you don't have one, please let us know so that we can give you one. But I've been informed that each one of us got a coupon. So we're going for a group photo. We are trying to arrange the photo point properly so that we have the photo of the year, most especially after our very own governor has been fully initiated into Karamoja culture. He looks so different from when he came in. And we are told that the rest of us who are initiated by osmosis. So we're going to have a group photo. Trust me, this is going to be a photo of the year. It's going to be a photo of the year. Please. To the rest of us, stay in the room until we advise you accordingly. Let's conclude this. We can see in the first photo, we have governor, we have a general council, we have the head of SCF, we have the RADC Mama, very similarly dressed, we have executive director administration at the Bank of Uganda. We have the director of commercial banking at Bank of Uganda featuring in that photo, uniquely dressed and smiling. There is one more addition in the photo, Saram Kisa Miriembe. Okay, after that, we are going to take now the very last one Nakasi has organized. Now we are going to sit. Okay. So going to take the last photos in this town hall meeting. And after that, we can go for lunch. Once again, I want to thank you so much for coming. Thank you for responding to the Bank of Uganda invitation to attend this town hall meeting. So we have the official photo, ladies and gentlemen. Sitted in the front row is the governor, Bank of Uganda. Next to him is the member of parliament. We see the resident district commissioner. We see the chairman, Nolose Five. I can see the deputy RADC. I can see the CEO of Capital Markets Authority and the board member at the Bank of Uganda. We have our very own Kenneth Egessa, director communications and PR. We have our general council, the executive director who heads the legal services directory. And we have our religious leaders in the background. We have the army in the photo. We have the Uganda prison service in the photo. I can see other regulators, financial sector regulators in the photo. Obra is there, Omra is there. The district leaders are in the photo. Trust me, this is going to be a photo of the year, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, so we are. Ladies and gentlemen, the photo. Then Nakasi is going to lead.